Meeting to order at seven twelve, if you all rise.
Let me introduce to the flag of the United States of America. We're in the Republican Party, we're just hands, one nation under God. And we're just all.
Okay, thank you all and welcome. Dr. Willis, do we have any acknowledgements?
None.
You have any additions to the agenda? There are none. Am I reading this correctly, Dr. Willis? No minutes to approve?
No.
We'll move right along then to public participation. The members of the talent board of education welcome the members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance, and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting setting. If you would like to speak, please, if you're in the room, raise your hand. If you're online, raise your Zoom hand, be called. As usual, please begin with your name and address for the minutes. Chris Moran.
Hi, Chris Moran, sixty-eight, Anthony Road. I just wanted to thank Tony and Jen for reminding the council last week about the rounds that happened. Counselor Buckler and I attended, and I thought it was very informative, and it was a great way to learn more about schools and the budget process. I also wanted to thank the board in advance for all the time you're already putting into developing the budget. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that the council is going to be implementing like a rotating liaison position with the Board of Eds. So each, we're gonna try to have a counselor cover each of the Board of Ed meetings so that the council can be as informed as possible about what's going on regarding the budget and everything else on Board of Ed. We do that with planning and zoning and other, other commissions and boards. So that's the, the plan that we're gonna do. So I'm here for tonight and thank you all.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else? Again, if you'd like to speak, raise your hand or your Zoom hand, gonna be recognized. There are none. We will close public participation or response.
We've had two emails come in, one concerning the budget and one concerning athletics.
Points of information, would anybody from the board like to speak?
First, thanks, Chris Moran. I was at the town council meeting last Tuesday, and I heard it suggested that you guys were going to implement liaisons. Jacob had said that he would connect with Tony and I. So thanks for letting us know and thanks for being on tonight. I also thought I would mention, Katie and I did the instructional rounds at TIS on the sixteenth, last Thursday. It was, it was visiting math and looking at multi-tiered systems of support. And it was, it was great. It was, it was actually a little bit different than most of the rounds I've been to in the past and where I think that we typically see a lot of instructions when, when we rotate the classroom, you know, see the teacher at the class, you know, reading, you know, number corner or a fundamental lesson. This, that it was Math Learning Lab, we got to meet with some of the staff first and then we visited, I think, three, four. Yeah, four different classrooms, plus the math intervention room, plus the special education room. And it was great. It was really informative. It showed that at TIS, they actually, rather than like having a child, you know, pulled out for services during other classes, they actually, it happens during math class. So in the Math Learning Lab, they're getting, you know, all kinds of different support. So in the classroom, they're get, there are small groups working with a teacher, or there may be a couple working with a para. There were children that were doing individual activities on their computer. You know, in the special ed classroom, it was a little bit larger, a group working with the special education teacher. And in the learning lab, there were two small groups working with Mr. McCarthy and a interventionist. They were using so many different, that's the word I'm looking for, variables, method, you know, they were, they were using.
Manipulative?
Manipulative. They were using whiteboards. They were using dice. They, you know, were using the Promethean board. They were using, you know, the little, sort of the blacks that, you know, have the ten.
Yeah.
They were using that. They were using some of them, like a few at the same time. They were, you know, writing equations on the board, but then doing it on the dice or the manipulatives. They were like playing a game, you know, teacher versus students. Every kid in every single room we went to was completely involved in doing something. And then afterwards, we sat in on, it's called a data team meeting, where they actually discussed, you know, the, the students that had come in to who was gonna stay, who was gonna go out, new students going in, in to the learning lab with Ms. McCarthy, the math interventionist. So I just thought it was great. I want to thank, of course, Mr. Dean and Ben Webster and Mark Rudy for their time and all the teachers that helped us. It was really, it was a great day, as they usually are.
Thank you. Anybody else? Committee liaison report, curriculum.
We met today with a presentation on homeschooling. And during the COVID years, we actually got to a max of, was it forty kids that we had lost to homeschooling? I think that's what the chart said. And that, that was, that was where it topped out. And we have slowly come down. We're not quite back down to our pre-COVID numbers, but we're just about there, which is only about five kids being homeschooled in the district. So it was a good presentation.
Is that presentation the whole?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's there. Right. Communication.
We had a meeting last week. I'll provide an update the next way in. It's just run a lot like right now.
You don't really do PDM?
Sure you have something?
I do.
Oh, great.
Just in case you ask. Okay, wait, I'm gonna make a figure for my tired eyes today. So some of it's repetitive from last week, but, or two weeks ago, the tickets for the Wizards vs. Holland game are for sale, are out on sale now. That is Saturday, March twenty-second at five PM at the high school. The tickets start at twenty dollars for students and twenty-five dollars for general admission. And they go up from there, depending on if you want to get packages with some stuff in them. You can buy tickets at www.harlemwizards.com/ticket/tenland. Teptoe is doing their virtual staff appreciation event on Friday, February seventh. So there's a sign-up sheet for donations on their Facebook page if you're interested in that. The dance dates for TIS are grade four is February seventh, grade five is March twenty-first, and they're from six to eight PM in the TIS cafeteria. Boosters is doing, is still doing the Valentine's cookie kit that I mentioned a couple of weeks ago. The kit is made by a local baker, Joanne McCarty, and it comes with everything you need to decorate eight cookies. You can order now until February sixth for twenty-four dollars via Venmo and pick up is at two ten, is on two-ten at the high school. You can pay via Venmo, T H S Booster Club, and that is on the Booster Club Facebook page as well.
Thank you. Thank you. FFC, Dan unfortunately is not available today. Policy.
Can you hear me? We had to postpone due to a work conflict for me, so I will have an update at next meeting.
Thank you. Negotiation.
Not at this time.
Okay. And my apologies, I jumped in the agenda. Stu, representative.
All right. Hello, good to be back. So we have our finals at the high school next Tuesday and Wednesday, with Thursday being our midsemester day and the new semester starting on a Friday, which is a little strange, but it'll be fine. But we're really finishing strong. We have a lot of good resources and I'm excited for the next semester.
Also, the freshman class is selling roses for Valentine's Day this week in the cafeteria, and they will be delivered during Eagle Walk on February thirteenth. Also, Scoop Club is going to Bromley Mount on February eighth. Departure is at five-thirty AM at THS, and it will return at about seven PM.
And I'm sure you guys will expect what I'm about to say. It's also about DECA. So this is a really big time of the year for DECA. We have a lot of big events coming up. Our DECA test, which is one-third of the score that may send us to Nationals, is on February tenth. Mark your calendars. It is after school at Talent High School. And we are going to states at the AquaTurf Club on March third, and the permission slip for states is due tomorrow. So for all the high school DECA students that are listening right now, they are due tomorrow. So we also have a DECA meeting tomorrow, which they will be brought in. We're aiming for about thirty-five, forty people going. That's what we're shooting for. That's what we're thinking is going to happen. So it's a very, very fun time with very fun things to come. And that is it. Any questions?
How many kids are involved in DECA?
So this year, I should know the exact number from being vice president. It's about sixty. It's around sixty. So due to sports and various seasons, we have a fluctuating number of attendees. Usually it starts off really high in the beginning of the year. This is where it gets into a little bit of a lull. Those are the states we get, big boost, right after states goes back down, and then you get a lot before the end of the year. So it fluctuates.
All right, so forgive my ignorance about DECA. I know you guys do what, mock business plans and stuff. Can you just explain a little bit of the whole process? And being good friends with Jayden, I probably should know more, but I don't, sorry. Can you explain a little bit more?
Yeah, yeah. So DECA, there are many different ways to do that, but at Talent, we really focus on one component of DECA, which is role plays. So during a role play, you and a judge, or you, a partner and a judge, sit down. You get ten minutes or thirty minutes if you're in a team to prepare a pitch about a prompt that you get on a sheet of paper. So you can compete in a marketing class, or not class, you can compete in a marketing competition, a financial competition, business administration, just different types of business. And then you'll present your pitch in a ten or fifteen-minute presentation, again, depending on if you're competing singularly or with a team. And you get to pitch your idea just straight off the bat. Your judge will score you on certain performance indicators, like if, like you're doing a marketing competition, one of your performance indicators may be, you know, how does finding your target market help with creating your business plan? That might be one of your performance indicators. You have to talk about that, stay at the points. If you score high enough and you place top three at states, you get to go to Nationals, which this year is in Orlando, California. And you do the same thing all over again, including the test.
So that ten or fifteen-minute pitch that you do is all prepared in ten minutes?
Yeah, yeah. So mostly it's off the cuff, which can either be really great or really bad. Last year, I competed in sports and entertainment. Last year, I was prepared for entertainment. I got voting. So, you know, that was a challenge, but it's a really, really fun experience. It helps you a lot with public speaking, helps you a lot with thinking before going on your feet. And, you know, I love it. Jayden can talk even more about it, I'm sure, but.
Is there seasons during the year, like there are with athletics, or is it just competitions scheduled at different times that you prepare for?
So at Talent High School, we have a practice competition that usually happens in December. And practice competition is kind of like pre-states. It really gets you involved in what a competition would look like. We try and create as realistic a situation as we can. And that gets people prepared for states. States is the big one, because everyone at Talent High School has the opportunity to go to states. That's the same with a lot of people in Connecticut, because we're such a small state with such a small state DECA chapter. But if you look at like California, they have like regionals and then they go to states. But since we are relatively small, everyone has the opportunity to go to states, compete there. So everyone can, you know, put on their resume, compete at DECA states. And then if you score high enough, if you do well enough, you have the opportunity to go to Nationals.
Nice.
And what I did, what I do is, I do sports and entertainment, but how I got to Nationals last year, because my voting pitch wasn't peak, is I do school-based enterprise, which means I run the school store. And last year, I went in place of the people who actually ran the school store with my partner. But this year, I actually am a manager of the school store. So in that situation, you get to write a fifty-page pitch beforehand. It needs to be approved. And then if it gets approved, you have a ticket to Nationals. You attend a conference that is extremely informative and extremely long. And then you pitch something, but you have a little bit more time to prepare it. So that, we don't really do competitions like that at Talent, but we do if it's just SB, which is what I compete in.
Thank you. The only thing I would add is give yourself more credit. Give, give yourselves more credit in terms of the leadership component of, of DECA as well, in the sense of, you know, you guys just did a whole seminar back in, 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 in November for the power trip, right? So you guys put on a whole seminar where you're leading, I mean, hundreds, hundreds of kids throughout, I mean, different backgrounds, different states, different, you know, everything. And they're coming to Audrey in her group's seminar, and they're, they're, you know, teaching a skill through a game. And I think you guys did the Candy Land type situation, whatnot. So, so, yeah, the leadership part of it is, is a really cool, cool aspect of DECA, so. Yeah, and it fluctuates year by year too. So I think the highest amount of kids that were ever in DECA, at least in Talent, I think at one point, it got up to about a hundred and twenty kids in, in the building, would go up to that library after school. Now, to Audrey's point, that would then go down, and then it would go back up, then go down, and so, and then COVID happened. And so, you know, to have sixty kids back in, sixty students back in DECA is a testament to these guys and Mrs. Bridge. They are, they are, I mean, they are awesome, so.
I don't, I don't know the numbers, but I'd be willing to bet that that's the largest extracurricular activity.
Hands down.
Yeah.
Hands down. So besides track, or, you know, track and field or something like that, but, you know, that's, that's a sport.
I might challenge that.
At that. I, I would agree with you. So, yeah, these guys are awesome. Yeah, good luck. I, I might end up going to state. We'll see. Jayden, have you played, what is it, Deciling?
Yes, Deciling.
No, but I, I, the next time I see Mrs. Bridge, I, I, I want a whole model, I'm telling you.
I want to hear how you rank.
Me too. No, I gotta, I gotta test my skills. So, no, good job. That's awesome.
Any other comment? Thank you, thank you, Bill. All right. Moving back to the order here. Chairperson's reporting. So I don't have anything specifically written out, and just, I was talking with Bill before this and looking at the agenda tonight and somewhat tongue-in-cheek saying, you know, who, who put both the school calendar conversation and the budget conversation? You know, on, on the same night, the same conversation, yeah, he reminded us that it was us. So, you know, while this certainly does not make for, for a concise meeting, it does make for interesting and one that's important. You know, just conversations around town, conversations with my kids and my, my own personal fans. The school calendar is always one that we really want to talk about and get in front of it and get that information out. So I'm excited to, to see this, to see the proposal and to, to hear some of the conversation as we kind of look at how we want to structure this for next year. I'll have more to speak on the budget again, you know, I may be in the, the minority here, and then I'm excited for the budget conversation. I think, you know, I think particularly this one is, you know, we look at all of the options and all of the different scenarios and conversations, the topics that we've brought together. And, and we really kind of weigh that against some of the real world, you know, constraints that we're, we're running into, you know. Our perfect world, what would we do? Well, you know, we're, we're not in that typical world. There, there are always limitations and there are always given gets that, that we're gonna have to sit there, we're gonna have to really kind of mitigate. And so I'm really looking forward to, to this group and how we bring those ideas together and how we come out with that product that's gonna be the best for Talent as a whole. So I, I'll stop on that, because like I said, I have more to talk later, but thank you all. And again, I'm looking forward to a great night of, of very good conversation. So moving on, new business. Dr. Willis, the monthly financial report.
So as is our typical, well, in our typical practice, we'd have it in the first meeting month. In this case, I'll go over a couple of things, and I'll try to keep it kind of high level and only focus on the big stuff. But overtime is code one-thirty. It's, it's about twenty-two thousand. It's because of custodial stuff, subs. Some of these things that I'm talking about, we've had this conversation before. I've talked about it before in some of the meetings, and in the FFC, subs are an issue for custoding, so right now. Stipends, again, it's the, it's the special education, the four leap, and some of those things that are driving stipends to be a bit, bit higher. Transportation clubs, which we talked about, that type of thing. The health life liability code two-ten is over by twenty-nine. Last time it was ten. It'll continue to change based on any vacancies of retirees, things like that. And professional education services, three-twenty is over by eighty-seven. Last month was much lower. It's due to a special education para contracted and psych services, services are things we needed to do, to stay in compliance. And so that ran over as it can sometimes from tuition code five-sixty is over by twenty-two thousand, one-fifty-four. That's up significantly, and do you see that typically happen as we move up through, kind of along through the year? It can dramatically change based on any kind of special enrollment or additional tuition costs or excess cost reimbursement, that type of thing. So that can fluctuate, and we typically do expect it to. Those are most of the areas of over budget. I'll just stop there. If anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer them or write them down.
Yeah, those, those line items that are over budget, do you see them by the end of the year leveling themselves out with not spending as much in a month? Or are they gonna continue to be over budget?
I think some of them will continue to be, but typically, we sometimes will have other areas that we don't, you know, don't spend as much in that offset at the end of the year. I mean, that's typically how it goes in kind of an education budget, if something's higher. And you'll notice sometimes we freeze the budget and we freeze it. We, you know, if tuition goes massively or something like that, we have to freeze other areas to balance it so we can get to the end of the year and have it be, you know, at a certain level to end the year. So, you know, some of them, they'll probably remain that way. Custodians are, are what they are. But we'll head, we, we always, well, we typically, ninety-nine percent of the time, end at the end of the year with a balancing, pretty close, overall.
Yeah. Yeah, I had a line item for the textbooks. Looks like we budgeted a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars for ending to the end of January here. A few months left in the school year. Well, it's been seventy-three thousand. Looks like we have an additional, you know, whatever might also be purchased. But right now, it looks like, you know, we've got an extra almost sixty percent or a hundred and eight thousand dollars in this line item. Is there some reason why we budgeted so much and haven't spent much, or little explanation? I appreciate it.
Trying to get to where that is here. Well, I'll speak to it.
Do you want to see?
No, no, it's okay. I was gonna try to put it up there, but.
Slide six-forty.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. I'm just gonna put it up for the public, but I can't get that. Okay, so you're, you're wondering why the budget balance is about a hundred and eight thousand? I think some of that is, and I, and I'll get more broader answer, but at least some of that is because probably in the transition, we do have companies that we're engaging, but we haven't executed the contracts with them yet. Some of them are waiting for the new ELA person. Some of them have to do with, you know, with just the timing of when the lasts, you know, last some subscription ended and the new one begins, that type of thing. So you'll see that drop dramatically in the next couple of months. But there's, there was some reluctance to spend in some things like ELA until we got the new coordinator in or the new curriculum person in. So that, that did hold up some of it, but I can run the bases to, to find out why some of that hasn't done so fast. And then get back to it with that.
Yeah, so the subscriptions, that doesn't fall, does that not fall computer software online item?
Some of them are, are like a combination of virtual and, you know, virtual and online services, but they're still under textbooks, like Savis and things like that. There is a textbook component and a virtual component, you know. So it, it's, it's like, there are a couple of reasons for that, but I can give you the, you know, I can run the base.
Yeah, I really would like to more in depth of that, because that seems, yeah, we, we have, you know, we have needs of faculty, whether it's a reading person, we can hire a full-time person, we're not gonna spend under ten grand. So just kind of alarming to me. All right, thank you. Yes, I'm done for a moment. Thanks.
Any other questions? Dr. Willis, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school calendar. This is just for my identification. This is the first read, correct?
Right. So every year, we do bring the calendar to your attention, try to do it as early as we can at the end of the year. Typically, policy would look at this, and that was slated for policy, and this is sometimes the case, and then it comes here. Could not do that in policy, so you're getting the first read here. This isn't that different from each year. We have to adhere to our regional calendar for certain things. So sometimes people ask, you know, why is April break where it is and so on? That is because we have to adhere to the regional calendar. Every rest region in Connecticut, or Regional Education Service Center, there's like six in the state. We're part of the one that is called EastCon, and so there is an EastCon calendar. We have to base many of those vacations and other days on that calendar. And so this is doing some of the things that we've talked about before. You know, parent-teacher conferences are available, okay, for twelve, a full day off in November twenty-sixth.
Sorry, did you want to put the calendar?
Yeah, I'm just reading from here, yeah.
Okay.
And then I'll pop right to it.
Okay.
But. But do you mind if I finish with?
No, 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 please, please.
So November twenty-sixth, generally, it's been preferred to have that, that week, to have that day off to provide families' travel time during Thanksgiving break. It fulfills all the contractual obligations. Sometimes people will ask, and why does the beginning of the year look like that? Why do you have that many days a year? And, you know, only one, one or two on, during the year for, you know, for in-service days. That's because these are contractually read upon. Where they fall is contractually read upon as well. Faculty in-service days in February align with non-school days to provide families a little bit larger block rather than having it isolate and connected in service to the President's Day days. There is a reasonable number of early release and professional in-service days. There is such a massive amount of work that has to be done. Teaching and schoolwork is not just what happens in the classroom. I mean, that's a big part of it. But it's also the curriculum, you know, we have CIA teams, or it's called Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Teams. There's all kinds of training that has to occur for inter-reading, Bridges Training, the State of Connecticut requires a whole group, you know, set of trainings that take probably six to eight hours on their own. There's a massive amount of training and it's only increasing now. So these kinds of days are where that gets done. The only other place that gets done is that we pull teachers out of classrooms and put subs in, but if you do that, you have to pay more for the subs. You know, and we could not possibly accomplish everything that needs to get done, you know, with just. You know, with just subs, you know, and then pulling people out of classrooms, so. Teaching and the operation of a school district is what happens in the classroom, but it's also what happens to plan. For the classroom, to develop the curriculum, to to do the trainings that are needed by the state and through, you know, all the programming that's necessary. And so that's why you have early days, and the number that we're asking for is pretty much exactly the number that is needed. We actually, you know, would benefit from more than that, but we're working with what we have. And so what's requested is is vital by. By our staff to be able to get these things done. And it only continues to increase, you know, the the state had even more required trainings this year than they have ever had, and so that. You know, that's just a huge chunk, plus we now have to train para educators, that is a limited part of it, and so that's another huge chunk. You can't pull para educators off their duties to do that and day, you know. That training is also a part of what we are, you know, what we are obligated to do, and it's good, they should be trained, but I'm saying it's just, you know, that's part of the picture too. They're placed so that we can retain student population, sometimes people would ask, why don't you place an early release on Friday, well, it's on Friday, things, you know. People take the long weekends and. People don't have vacations and enrollment for those days drops, having them in the middle of the week is generally seen as better. Calendar was going to be reviewed by the policy committee, but we just weren't able to do that, so it has been reviewed by the TDA and the administration. And then it comes to you guys. So that's basically the rundown, and this is what it looks like, I'm also pursuing if, once we get this done. One option, I also was going to consider this year and throw out to you for considerations, if you want me to do a second year right away. So if we get this done and you're happy with it, I could replicate a similar calendar for the coming year, and then you would have a two-year calendar. I've I've been trying to get East Con to commit to doing their requirements for a two-year thing, and I think we're gonna get them, so if you wanted. We could do this, do a two-year calendar, and then people would know. You know, two years out now, what it's going to look like, which may be appreciated. So if, you know, once we get through this, if you're interested. We'd be ready to present another one for six, seven, twenty six, twenty seven. Anyway, you can see everything that I talked about in here, second page of it also has the. The acknowledgements and cultural services, students will get days off for those if they're taking a religious. No, for religious reasons and so on. School hours, early releases, the two, two hour delays, all that information is part of the calendar. And then, of course, you know, our pinks are the professional development ERs in the beginning of the year in service are labeled as such, twenty six to twenty nine. You have your mid semester day and you're in service here, but these tend to get separated because. Snow days will affect the mid semester day, they don't as much affect the K in service, so what happens is, what happened this year. That mid semester day usually gets pushed back, 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 so today, this year, it was what the. It's the thirtieth or the twenty ninth and the first semester, the first day of the new semester, you know, moves back Friday. Yeah, so mid semester day now moves back a little and it'll probably move back. And the last, the last of the year days is June third. So. This is not that different from our prior. And it is based strictly in what's needed.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. Question, Jayden. I'm trying to count it, Tom, and what I appreciate, Jakes, what I appreciate about this schedule. I think compared to the other three schedules that I've proposed while I've been on the board is finally, you know, from the get-go, I like the half days. I like the half days for the professional sense of it, the educational benefit for the students is 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 the loss of educational benefit. Minimal, the professional benefit for the people in the buildings. Tremendous, and so I I like seeing it right off the get-go, and then we can go from there, but, you know, what this tells me is we're. We're we're we're. Drafting a a schedule that supports our educators, and so this is right off the get-go, I'm gonna make that very clear, and I support it. I was gonna ask, I missed the how many days, but we're ready, you mentioned it and it's right at the top, one eighty. I think this schedule. Better reflects what we as a district should value, and that's supporting number one, supporting our educators and students. And number two, being common sense, I mean, Manchester had to retract their schedule because of, you know. Some some errors that were made around holidays, and so I appreciate not seeing those just basic. Common sense errors being made in our district, so I appreciate what you did, no questions, I just wanted to make sure I got my opinion across.
How many of? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay. Professional days. In this calendar compared to the current one we're in, what's? What's the difference?
Either the same, I think we might have one more here, but I think it's it's about the same, let me pull up the this year.
I guess. You know, to. I predict you, Jayden, and I know we're good enough where we can do that. You know, I have, as everyone knows, three kids in the school system. And they regularly tell, they love half days. One, they get home early, but two, because they, all three of them tell me not much gets done, not much teaching. Gets done in those half days, so I certainly have some concerns, especially in these months where there's two half days. I would almost rather see a full day off. Instead of two half days for professional development, in these months where there's two half days. I'm looking at March, October, I also, you know. Yes, I want to support our educators, but I also want to be cognizant of. Our parents. You know, we've got two working parents. And they've got to, you know, accommodate for half days now. You know, I think it's. Might be a little bit easier instead of twice in a month to accommodate for a half day. Just having to worry about one time in that month. And. You know, I don't know, that. Might be a little bit easier to to manage for our parents as well.
Yeah, so I'll. Echo a lot of what Bill said. Took ninety percent of what I was saying, feedback. The feedback that I've received from many members in the community. Is the frustration with these days, and then there was even some of the same people that. When I push back on that day before the holiday break. Of having that extra early release day. It really puts a lot of people on a bind. Who are working. Traveling from far away, maybe they're Hartford or South Windsor, wherever, twenty, thirty minutes away. And having to come back either in the middle of the day or finding a grandma or neighbor, whatever it is, and especially the little trip like Bill's saying, it's very difficult. From a cost standpoint and an infrastructure standpoint of. Getting them instead of like Bill said, it's easier. You can put three or four hours, there are three or four of these. Little windows of time into one full day, don't have a couple of professional development days. That's all on top of that, and then also the other. Thing here, the twenty third for December of having an early release, just to have an early release. For the holiday, when you're ready off on Christmas Eve. I don't see an extra couple hours of school, I think will be, rather than like Tony had stated in the last. Debate over that other half day we had before the holiday. Early release day. That's better for the kids to be in front of the educators than to not be in front of educators. I know some of the kids may have been to high school, a little more adept to it, they can manage, but. When you have the middle school and under, it's a lot better for them to be in front of an educator to learn than by themselves, so. So at this time, I'd really would like to see if we can somehow condense some of these. Early release days to maybe one full day off, pull in three or four of these together and only have less of these early release days. Also to see if we can. Take the. Third and not have that as an early release day, just for fun, and have some education up. Thank you.
Doctor Will, let me teach you a second, let me bounce over you. On Brian's comment there. What is the benefit or what's the decision that leads to the half days as opposed to combining purple?
The full days are contraction. So the ER days are something we have control over, but we can't add an in-service day without contractual station and negotiations. Those who have participated in negotiations, that the calendar is part of a negotiated aspect of the bargaining too. So we can, we have control over ERs, but not over all of the 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 actual full days we have to negotiate.
So you can't. You can't have no kids in school and have it just be all training. That full day for teachers unless you go back, because it's.
Yeah, it's right, there's a hundred and eighty eight days, and they are earmarked through the way this is set up. You have to negotiate another like certain day or whatever. The other piece is. If the people that have been part of negotiations, a part of some of these other visitor committees know that these are days of the only place certain things happen.
Say that again.
These are our days are the only place that we can do. You know, certain trainings and and things like that, and so we end up paying more if we don't have the yard days, because we have to accommodate. Mandatory trainings and things somewhere else, so it's just a lot more subs and a lot more logistics, it's actually far more disruptive to the education process. They have to bring in and do sub coverage type things, and there are so few subs. I mean, we can barely manage right now, with the new laws that allow people to take hour by hour. We're really strapped, so. That's, these are our days are are part of just what it takes to function. Now, all of the, you know, points being made are great, it's just that if. You know, we go less than this, I think it was the same as last year as it looked. You know, we're really gonna be struggling to figure out how to do this, how to do this from an operational point of view, because of all of these aspects of. The trainings and the curriculum, all that have to get done, and then the AS committee, for instance, had its prior things that we're working on. We just, we really have to have time to be able to do that, and 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 we're tight on that right now as it is. And I know it's the same talking points, but it's true, that's why it's there.
Why did that answer your question first?
Sort of, I had one other thing that I was thinking of, is there the? You said that we are, we have to use this East Con region, is that, what what, where is that? Is this state law, where's this?
It's somewhere in the state's regs that you have to use your regional calendar, now, I don't know what happens if you don't.
Yeah.
I've never tried.
I know there's quite a few people in this community, and my family included. Who are associated with Yukon, you have a lot of people in town who work there, so it's just, it's. Difficult, like they'll be on break and then the kids will be on break, it's two separate things, so that's why you have people leave school to take their kids on a vacation. When usually the parents off, just for the sole fact that they don't match up, and you lose more out on attendance, which. We know goes back to our metrics, which goes back to a whole slew of other things, I think it'd be more beneficial. From a metric standpoint, to have it aligned with the Yukon, at least the one in the spring, the the spring break.
I mean, the the resks, like, and it's happened this way that. You know, if you're part of one, if you have a, you are in one town and your relatives in another, or like, you know, if you work here, but have kids over in another town. It's great when they line up, but, you know, the different rests have different calendars or different sets of, you know, what where things are supposed to be. So when you do go one direction, sometimes somebody wishes it was the other direction, depending on where you move these breaks. Before Easter, after Easter, sometimes people have opinions about that, the reason we do what we do is because we have have to with the rest. I've never gone against that, I did call about that though, and. We are not supposed to go against the rest's calendar, I don't know what they'll do to us if we do. And I think there was a short reprieve from that, one or two, one year or two years or something, somewhere around over, there was this short reprieve where people were allowed to do what they wanted. But then it went right back to, you have to follow the rest. And the argument or the, what I got was that something, and I don't wrap my head fully around the explanation, but it's something over the lines of. It has to do with how the state provides resources and how if everybody was looking for things at the same exact time, it would overwhelm. You know. The trainers or state resources, so they spread these things and very, you know, these calendars out so that. We're not all doing the same thing at the same time, and they can more adequately address the needs of the school systems. You know, with state resources.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the whole stuff, I'm just talking about, we have a lot of people in this town who work. At Yukon who have, who get off at a certain time, and these are constituents, taxpayers who this affects them, these aren't just random people, these are taxpayers. So I'll I'll leave it at that.
But yeah, but get get ready, you had a quick comment on Jayden's answer.
Yeah, about the the professional development days. We know from. Interviewing our most recent employee that we took from another school district. That 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 school district does it a little bit differently, and that was. You know, made known to us, how are, and I believe those, their professional development was done after school. Am I, am I wrong in remembering that properly?
I don't, she and and the job she had would be somewhat involved with that, but I don't know. If they're after school and they're beyond their contractual day. It was either stipulated by contract or they're getting paid for that.
So we couldn't eliminate these half days. And and. Do something later in the year, that's something like that.
You have to, you know, I mean, later in the day.
Yeah.
We'd have to get, we'd have to agree to that.
Okay.
And, you know, later in the day, for instance, your average birch growth teacher is gonna end after four. So three hours of professional development after four is probably not appealing. To the first group, or the CIS group, you know. So my guess is that if we did, which we could, in negotiations, you can make your list of things you'd like to see. And then we go in there with our list and they have their list, and we could do that, something like that, and say, you know what? Forget all these, you know, in search of whatever, we want to do these days, starting after your end of school day and extending for three hours, and they would say, oh, all right, well. If we're gonna do that, you have to give us, you know, X, Y, and Z, or they'll say, forget it, we don't want to do that.
And then in the same thing, you know, combining two of these half days to make one full day off with just development would have to be negotiated as well.
Right, because it's how one of the one eighty eight. It become one eighty nine.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I was going to. See, I got the math on the, it looks like it's the same amount of days too. I, you know, I think this is a familiar conflict that, you know, we have. A lot of the same reasonings, you know, said. I would like to point out that one of, you know, the things I hear from parents. A lot is that. The notice that they have on this is actually very helpful, whereas the things that hurt them the most are, you know, stick, getting a call from the school nurse in a snow day. Where they have to kind of call that emergency person, but, you know, us giving them. You know, six months to a year in advance on this stuff, what they can schedule around. Um. It. It was even just brought up in our rounds. This time, the TIS rounds, not even the budget rounds are brought up there too, but in the TIS rounds, as we've heard before as well. The, there really is a limit on the time that our teachers are allowed to plan. And spend together and work on curriculum, and they brought it up again this time, for instance, we were meeting with the third grade team, we were meeting with just half of the team. And they said the only time they actually have to meet as a grade level is during professional development days, so. These days are incredibly important to them for a lot of reasons, and as Walt mentioned, there are so many things, and when you do the rounds. At the schools, you hear about so many of the other things that go into their job, besides obviously just being in the classroom, all of the. The testing and the metrics and. You know, the lesson plans and, you know, I think I wrote down something like that. Things that you really don't realize. The amount, the workload. That is on our teachers with more limited time every year. Another thing I wanted to bring up that we've talked about before is the CEA survey. You know, that, you know, showed that teachers in this country are very dissatisfied at this time. You know, sixty nine percent, I believe, sixty nine percent of teachers expressed dissatisfaction. Right now with the conditions in public education, and one of the areas they did talk about was more time for planning and collaborating. So. You know, not providing them this time, I think is a is a disservice to them and it's a disservice to our students. I. Think that, you know, we probably all have kids that have different experiences on half days, I know that sometimes my kids come home exhausted because all. sometimes my kids come home exhausted because all of their stuff is actually shrunk down. And they have very difficult days. I think our student reps mentioned last time that they had very busy half days. We were in here, I think on a half day and then test and and study, um, getting ready for a test and whatnot. Um, I know that one of my sons in one of his classes this year has done a lot of, uh, planning for essays during those half days in that class and also remember their free time is reduced. There's no recess in the younger grades, lunches, very short on these days. So the amount of minutes that they're actually losing, I'm not sure is for me, an argument on, um, loss of academic time. And, um, Turn over my turn if it comes back to me now.
Yeah, I don't know if I want to ask, but I will. Um, so is there a requirement for attendance at these trainings? Or can, can teachers take that half day and say, I'm leaving early that day or whatever? I mean, do, do they have requirements that they have to fulfill in terms of professional development?
Yeah, they're required to be there. Um, if they submit for a personal day, we can't really start small. Um, you do have to submit or used to have to submit in advance. Now, the, the way it's set up as of January first is that they could just, the day before, even hours before, say, I have to take a mental health day. So the most direct answer to your question is that while we have professional expectations, the state has set it up that people can leave pretty much whenever they want. Which is why we're not happy with what happened recently with the state. Having said that, um, there is a professional ethic involved and the vast majority of teachers in this district and across the state will not take advantage of that, um, and they have not taken advantage of that. Um, but could they? Could someone, they could?
Curious, but I have to agree with, um, Brian on the half day on the twenty-third. Of, I guess it was December, it, I, I don't know that we need to be throwing that into the blend when we, I don't think we had that. Well, I mean, I think we voted for it, but I think that was. One year kind of thing. And I think you even talked about that, that like sometimes we do that, sometimes we don't. So I don't know that I'm prepared to make that a standing thing that's done all the time now. Um, so, that's.
Um, the other thing I was just going to comment about vaguely is contracts and negotiations. So these are the types of things that are discussed, you know, contracts and negotiations aren't just about salary. So a lot of elements like this were very heavily discussed this year in both the teachers and the paras. Um, Dr. Willett touched on, you know, the state require additional requirements for the paras. Um, having this time is incredibly important to our teachers and our paras. So it is something heavily discussed. Um, and in terms of, I guess, I, my personal opinion on it, in terms of doing this after school hour, I, I think that would be a very tough sell.
Oh, I wasn't saying that, that I was comparing different districts. I certainly don't want that either.
With our district and our salaries for our pairs and our teachers, I think that would be, um, difficult. And it would likely be, have to be with pay and with our budgets. I don't think that we can afford that either. So, um, I did just want to touch on that. And then the Christmas day. I thought what we had said was this was the first year in a long time that that half day wasn't on the calendar and it was something that was typically on the calendar beforehand, but I could be wrong on that.
So the way it was for a while was that if it abutted a weekend, we didn't do it. But if it didn't about the weekend, we did do it. Then it was brought to the board because there were some scuttlebutt around. Why didn't we do it? And I explained at the time that usually we would do it if we were up against a weekend, you know? Or not do it if it was up against the weekend, which I believe it was up against the weekend this time, right? And it was because and that, that was the type of year we normally wouldn't do it in. But if it was not up against the weekend, we typically have. And so that's, and then we did this year, even though it was a weekend.
And I wouldn't necessarily be against combining and having a full day rather than a half day. Um, especially to Brian's points about, you know, easier to, to take off on from parents. I guess, um, it would just mean that this, we would have to run calendars quite a bit in advance, right? To be able to put it through no negotiations first. Dr. Willett?
Yeah, you can make your list of which.
Cause I don't know that that's a, a difficult ask or just asking to run the days differently. Um, but that obviously wouldn't work right now, but I, I don't think that that's a negative to not, if we're going to do the same amount of time, but we're just restructuring how we do it. Again, in my opinion, I, I don't think that that would be unreasonable for us to bring up.
Let me ask you two, our student reps, you know, we, we've, Katie is wants to speak.
I'm good. We can, I, I have my little.
I'll, I'll get back. Uh, we, we've talked a lot about what it's like in the classroom. And I know you spoke on it last time, but I'd just like to bring that up again. What do you think?
I mean, I feel kind of divided. I mean, there are some half days where we're swamped with work because it's the same work we would do on a normal day, just cut in half, but then there are days where like we're watching a movie or something like that, but, um. I don't know. I feel very divided on this topic. I do like the idea that maybe we would condense it into one day. Because I have two working parents and when I was a kid, yeah, it's hard to get someone just to come in and, um, take care of you. Um, I was lucky enough to have like neighbors that would come over, but that's obviously not the case for everyone. So I don't know. Do you want to speak more on that?
Sure. Uh, I feel like a lot of what I have to say is, you know, it's kind of already been said. Um, I can't really speak, speak, I can't really speak on, uh, the burden of the parental situation. I have a mom who's a stay-at-home mom, so I was always able to be picked up, but I know the burden is incredibly high for working parents and, you know, I can't imagine that. So I'm not going to speak on it. Um, but I think that it's important to look at like half days at, like they're not. Sometimes you don't get like the instructional value you would on every other day. That's going to happen. We're there for half the time. But I think that it's not right to say that it's a waste of a day. Because learning isn't just a teacher in front of a class of students. Learning can be a study block. When you're pressured for time, you don't have a steady block. You know, I have times in my A P psych class, you know, I work after school every day. I don't have a lot of time after school. I have big tests. I have a big test on Friday. I have not started studying. I don't know when I'm going to study. Having a day, having a thirty-minute block where I can really just lock in, I can get on my Chromebook, I can go into my notes and I can relearn that material for my test is so important. And that can be said for any of the classes at Tont High School. And a lot of teachers still do teach. They may get like less instructional, uh, time. But they still teach a lot and what they don't teach, they usually assign for homework, which we have more time to do. So I am absolutely not opposed to the whole day idea. I think that's really interesting. I want to see how the teachers feel about it. I feel like that's the most important thing going forward with, you know, half days versus full days. Because what the half days are for are for teachers to get training. And so if the consensus of teachers is no, we want training to be more spread out. Then I think that's how it should be. If the teachers decide, you know, maybe it would be good to get these two things together, get more time in different places. Then I think that we should do that. Because what we're having these for is teachers. And parents and students are affected and their effect, and the effects on them are important and should be look at, looked at. But what they're really for is the teachers. So I think that should be our main priority.
All right, Katie, did you have something?
So I just want to make sure I understand contractually. At the moment, we're obligated to have half days for professional development.
The, the contractual days that count as the teacher work days are set up. So you can only have a certain number of, um, of in, in service days, because in service day is a whole teacher. An E R day doesn't count as an additional full teacher work day because it is a. Um, and so some districts, I think like the one that are, are, um, most staff from the district came from, I was just looking at that calendar and it's hard to sort of, my eyes aren't great, but it looks like they have a fourteen full in service days. So some of that may be parent teacher conferences or whatever, but you know, that's a district where you have quite a few full days. Whether that's better for a parent than a half day, I don't know. And the ovals may all, there's, the ovals are different sizes depending on what month you're in, but I think they're looking at the key, the same thing. So it looks like they have two in the beginning and then like eleven or twelve full days. We do not. We have one or two full days, then we have half days. So did your, different districts do it differently, but I can tell you right now, as you look through all the districts, fine. We need the time. We, we, I, I could go over every single P D that we had to give it, you know, that is state mandated. It's some of them are hours and hours long and there's now more than ever. It's just a lot.
And teachers can avoid attendance if they find it, you know, not palatable.
Well, well, like I said, uh, the people that, uh, get into the field of education are dedicated to the welfare of children. They are not going to be people who, you know, typically take advantage of things. However, could they? You know, the new state rules make it very, you know, uh, yeah, somebody who wants to do that could take an hour here, an hour there and they, they don't have to provide a lot of reasoning. That's why a lot of people are unhappy with this and we all really hope that changes because it's a very logistically hard thing to do.
Yeah. So, I mean, I see the, maybe slightly differently because I live in a hospital. And when our clinicians are going to get their C U, so continuing education units, it's really important to me because it has to do with the, the like quality of care that they're then able to provide to the patients that we serve. And I do this in the same vein. If our teachers aren't going to professional development, they're not able to deliver the kind of quality education that we want the kids in our, in our town to be receiving. So if this is the most palatable way and this is sort of also contractually, you know, what we, we've been doing, then I think that that's the maintaining the line for, for now while we're under this contract is a good idea. Um, has it typically been half days and about this number for the last, I don't know, five years? Six years, about the same?
Well, if you go back long enough, I think one year we had fourteen, another year with nine, and then, you know, and the last, this last year we had eleven and this year we have.
So then this is nothing, yeah, nothing really that parents who've had kids in the school for a, a time will not be anticipating seeing, right? So, you know, as a working parent who, who, you know, works in the house and our house, depending on what I, what I have to do that day, um, it was always helpful to me to know in advance when I was going to need to take time off. Um, and how I was going to manage that. I think for the, the December twenty-third argument, I may have I had no skin in that game. I, I don't go anywhere around the holidays. I, I worked through those days, right? So, um, I would be concerned, I suppose, for families that do travel and use that time to, you know, help their kids pack, to prepare to leave for, you know, you know, Christians who celebrate Christmas. Might want to have that time to get their kids ready to get out the door to go travel. If that's what they're doing. So I guess that's my two cents. I can see both sides of the argument. But, and I, I would prefer that we not go testing the boundaries of whether we can be. Not, you know, I know this is especially without finding out first. So if we want Dr. Willis to find that out, let's, let's do that. But maybe let's convince another town to see whatever.
Doctor, well, I, I have just one question. If I'm looking through here, this does not have any snow days booked, correct?
Any snow day would push it out at the end of the year.
Okay, that's for contact. Okay. Um, and, and, and just to clarify, uh, a point you made, uh, just a little bit ago. You were, or at the beginning, you were saying that the, the number of P D days are are early release thing here is exactly what's needed to, to deal with the increasing mandated.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want more than this. We, we would struggle with less than this. And, and I think it's, it's one of those necessary evils. We just cannot get that done. And the other piece is that the stuff we're doing now on E R days, you'll probably have to pay them somewhere else for some of these things. Like curriculum development, there's a lot of C I A stuff happening in there. The only other way to do this, if you don't have the R days, is either in the limited number of in-service or you have to pay teams to do it outside of their contractual.
My, my question is actually. From the, what I've been reading this year, I mean, that the amount of professional development that is mandated, not, not nice to have, but you have to do this per, per the state is increasing. So if the number of hours that we're assigning to special development has remained somewhat steady, are we just becoming more efficient at producing it or how are we maintaining?
I think we are becoming very efficient at doing. It's just, um, it's overwhelming, you know? It, it's also overwhelming to have them come up like this, you know, and, and we, we do. We, 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 you know, the, the easy road out here, we just say, oh, let's just cut down the R days and it'll be less work. But we're not going, it'll cost the district more in the long run. We're not going to have enough stuff to cover it other ways. Maybe it, it may be even less stressful for me because we don't have to plan this on this cycle. Um, but yeah, we, we've become extremely efficient at doing this. Um, but anyway, it's, it's become harder to do it with, you know, with less.
Making it look like I understand, I'm, I appreciate Katie's analogy there and that, you know, I want, I want kids in front of teachers, but I want teachers fully to, uh, to do what they need to do. So the, the efficiency of care and making sure that they're empowered to do what they want is equally something we're concerned.
Yeah. Is there a reason why you chose not to put an in-service day in January and two in October and March?
Uh, when we went around with the various groups, it kind of settled in there. I think that October does have quite a few. And, you know, if you, if there was going to be one drop, I can understand why someone would want to drop there. January is the changeover in a new semester. It already has the, um, it already has the midsemester day, the K eight in-service day, the M L K day. And you lose two days coming back from the holiday. See, even though you don't have a day, you actually have a lot of sort of link starts, virtue startups in, in January. So generally people leave January alone because it already has M L K. It's, you know, midsemester K A in-service in the two, you know, a couple of days from the transition. Uh, that you don't, usually it's a tough day to get kids back and there's not a lot, you know? You gotta take a day or two to get them back up to speed. It's a tough month. So that month is usually, uh, left alone to the greatest extent possible.
Okay.
But I understand, I understand the question, certainly.
Dana?
Hi, can you hear me? All right. Um, I understand both sides of the coin, being a full-time working parent, you know, having to make adjustments and address those half days. Um, but obviously with this school calendar published, you know, I have an opportunity to plan and, and make provisions. Albeit, it's not the most convenient situation, but it's something that, uh, do understand. And again, I appreciate our student representatives' perspectives, what they said, um, they were right on target on both sides of the coin. Um, but also Katie's analogy about it is to continue their development. So they're, they're executing and implementing and, you know, the best possible educational experience for our students in the school. But I keep going back to hearing what, uh, the girls were saying about this is for our teachers. It affects our students and it affects our students and families, but this is for our teachers. But directly it's for our teachers to directly impact our students. Um, so I'm, I'm fully in favor of these. Um, on a side note, I think teachers might want the day after trick or treat off. And work on the P D and not have kids in school. Just kidding. But, um, uh, I think, I think taking the note of our, our continued professional development is super important. Uh, when I was at, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, you, you got, okay, gotcha. Sorry. I thought you lost me. Um, but in the rounds, when I was at the high school, every, I went to every single school as well, uh, you know, I went to. I went to every single school and they talked about, uh, every single one of them mentioned professional development. And they needed to support it and, uh, keep it flourishing, so that's from every single set of administrators. At the rounds last week, so that's all I have.
Really quickly, I'll say this, and this happens almost every meeting, and I, I know I'm the young guy in this room. I end up putting my hand down because I end up wanting a second round of questions, like, you, you must get me on the list and it's not just this term. And it happens the last term too, I get I'm the young man, man in the room. I would e- expect, I get the same opportunity to speak for a second round as everybody else, and so I wanna make sure I get that across because it, it's, it's. E- every week I end up putting my hand down and I, whatever, whatever, but it's, it's getting to a point where. I mean, I got some points to make, and so I'd like to make them, number one, um. I think Audrey hit a point that I, I agree with, if this was just for the heck of having a half day. If this was just for, let's have a half day just for the, I can see the argument here, but to Katie's point. I think the alignment of our teachers, you know, you wouldn't want one sixth grade classroom being. At one point in the school year, we just had a situation just today where multiple teachers are coming to me and they're both at different segments of, of the unit. And somehow we've got to translate the information to our students after school. And it's impossible because now we're at different parts, and so what do they do? They use the professional development days to get aligned, so next week when they have their PD, guess what? Now we're all back on the same schedule, so right now, coming out of the winter break. You know, it, it's, it's ju- it's jumbled, it's all over the place, so these professional development days, I mean, not only help align the teachers during the school day. But it helps align, I'm assuming, the administration, it, it, it helps align the folks after school. It, it helps more than just the school day, uh, as well, so I wanna make that point, and I appreciate Audrey, the point you're making. Again, about if this is for our teachers, who are our teachers benefiting? Our students, so that's point number one, and then, um, to Jen's point, um. It, with respect to Brian made a point about, you know, we're helping the families and whatnot, I completely agree. With this point about helping the families, um, one of the things we talked to about. You know, with the kids, when there's a, a conflict, could we got, we've gotta be able to control what we can control. In our position, in this world, we can control the schedule for the school district, I think. The best way for us to be able to help these families, at, at least one of the best ways, is to get this sucker out as soon as possible during the school year. And so my question to Dr. Willis is, what is, what is, what is holding us, again, Manchester's was proposed, I feel like. Weeks, a couple of weeks ago, what, what is the drawback to proposing this, I guess, before? This January, the second January meeting, is it possible to propose this earlier during the school year, earlier during the calendar?
Well, we, we have to run it through groups.
Okay, so can you explain that process?
Their, you know, their people presumably, and they come back and, you know, we'll take feedback on them. We also run it through admin, you know, they check with their own, you know, teams and their groups and they look at it. And then it typically goes to policy, but we do try to make that kind of streamlined, like this time it would have been to policy and to.
But that was today, that would have been today.
Been today to make it as fast as possible. But that, you know, um, we also have to wait for the release of the Eastcon calendar, which tends to be until we're November. You know, like usually November, I think it's pretty late, because I know Jen pesters them, it's later than November, I think, I have to look. Um, so it's usually like somewhere in that zone of November, December that you get it, and we run it through the groups, so we bring it to the earliest meeting we can bring it to. This case is January. But I think the whole, the thing that holds it up the most is that release of the Eastcon calendar.
But if it, if it's released in October, November.
Well, I, I, I think I jumped ahead of myself there, I'm pretty sure Jen would tell me that it wasn't October, but, um. But we get on it right away and then we have to schedule it into meetings and they have to, you know, it can't just be in a meeting, they immediately do that, they take it and come back, you know. So then, you know, that meeting sometimes doesn't happen again for a couple of weeks and the day needs time and everybody needs time to look, but, um. That's why I was thinking a two-year calendar might be helpful, because we already did all, you know, we, we're doing all that, but we're doing it for two years.
I would completely agree.
So what would happen is if we, if you're okay with this one and you're good, okay with me trying a two-year calendar. I'll go back and we'll do a similar thing again, most of it will look like this. Presumably if this was okay, that would probably be okay. So then we would be able to do two years and you wouldn't, you would have that notice that you're talking about. But it's, it's, it's typically, if I was Jen, if I had to imagine, and you can ask Jen yourself, she would probably say, and it's not Eastcon's fault. Because they have a lot to do, I'm not casting stones, but I think she'd say, it's sure, she, you know, has to. Keep reaching out and saying, well, let's come out, and then that's when we start. Okay, and that's probably the thing that holds it up.
You're good, and I don't mean to be so brash, I apologize, I just wanted to make sure, you know, it's weekend, it's meeting after meeting, this, this same thing happens. Um, so, um, but in terms of the calendar, I like the idea of the two years out. You know, let's get ahead of it as soon as possible, if we can get the next year's schedule as soon as possible, if we can get the next year's calendar as soon as possible. And then come January meeting, once Eastcon has proposed the following year's, um, calendar. Then let's get that, that out as soon as possible as well, whatever the process is, I think the best way for us to, at least one of the best ways for us to help families. Is to try to get this information out as soon as possible and let people come to their own determinations, again, same as what Audrey and Sarah said. I, I, again, the young man in the room, I don't have the children and whatnot, but, but, you know. I, I do understand that aspect of it, so I wanna make sure that's getting across, so, um, so that's all I wanna, I, I, I just wanted to make sure. And I appreciate your explanation of the sort of timeline there, so that's all, thank you.
And just, Jen, and a comment, you know, on your first thing is. It, it's a personal priority, that for me, that everybody has a chance to contribute, to, to a robust. And absolutely, you know.
When others go a second, when I.
And, and so if. If I am, or if it appears that I am missing you raising your hand or not giving you the, uh, proper time, please, don't put your hand up. Make sure that either I see it or Jen sees it, because I'm, that, I was trying to, it's, it's happening, my apologies.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to support the idea of potentially pitching, doing, putting the days together and doing one day instead of that. If, if, if that is palatable to the teachers and maybe helpful also to the families. If that's a win-win, I do think that that's something that would be nice to explore.
I, I want to please repeat.
In negotiation, we're talking about, it's a possibility to combine. Add extra ER days and, and remove half days.
All right. Dr. Willis, superintendent's proposed budget conversation. Uh, Dr. Willis, if you could, and I don't know if you intended to before, but if you could, then give just a quick. Synopsis of the changes that, that led to the, the copy we got today. Uh, and, and any of the bigger answers, uh, well then, you know, as, as we've spoken. Uh, go around for, for comments and for discussion, again, I know there's a lot to talk about and. We're gonna spend absolutely as much time as it, it requires to do so, uh, but please. Raise your hand and we'll try to get with everybody as we can.
So, uh, the, the difference, um, we didn't get a chance to really talk in that workshop. Because we all kind of go on a hundred directions, I actually had these both stand, but. There were, when I was looking at it, there were some, um, that when you roll it, you have to pull the trigger, so, so to speak, at a certain point in time. And then, uh, when you do that, sometimes if, uh, you know, certain people can get carried over in the rollover, as we say, to the next year. And that won't, that may not actually be in the next year, and so. A couple of staff got duplicated or rolled over in the next year when they really shouldn't have been. And so that meant that I could take those stuff out, so the difference was between that eleven point eight to eleven point one. Was these few that got caught up in the rollover, um, that didn't get caught by the printing of the document, but we. Soon thereafter, dumped. So that's, that's really the. The juxtaposition is that that's, you know, that represented some people that ended up being duplicated that. Or shouldn't have been rolled into the next year, so, um, that's it for that. You wanna? Bamble anything else?
Any, any of the, the big hitters, as far as, I know, there were a significant number of answers to the questions that they got posted.
Yeah, there's, um, it is about thirty to forty percent of the, um, I was able to get thirty to forty percent done, I appreciate your patience, I. You know, I, I think I took a, a total of four calendar days for a surgery that some people take a whole month of M L A off for. So the result of that is I have a lot of appointments and things that in the last, last two weeks I had to do, because I was not staying home from work. So, um, so anyway, you know, we, you know, went through it and, uh, as, a lot of these questions are great ones, they're quite detailed and are required. Uh, printing, you know, or pulling multiple reports, different things, or going and getting information, data, parsing through what had been written and providing an answer. Hopefully that makes sense, so about thirty-five to forty percent of the questions were answered. Um, about sixty-one percent of the questions came in in the last two days. So that, it kind of ballooned in the last two days, um. I should be able to get through the rest of the initial questions by in the next couple of days, because now we're on a roll with it. Um, and, and some of them are already in process, but I can't actually print them until I have what I need. Um, and there's, you know, a couple of things you'll see that I'll put in there and just asterisks like this is coming as soon as I get it. So, um, yeah, so about thirty-five, forty percent are done, sixty-one percent came in in the last, you know, two. Two days, and now we're getting through it, by next week, I think everything that's in there should be answered that has been put in up to now. So between now and next week, it should be there. You have two meetings before you have to make a decision, and you could add another one if you want. I also do meet with people individually or take, you know, there are some of, some board members, uh, who requested to sit there, have a. Conversation, and so I meet with them and answer questions they have, so I can do that with you anytime, it could be in the evening too, if you needed it. Um, and so I'm willing to do that to help as we move it along, but, um, we should be able to have at least up to the point that we have submitted now. Now, I haven't bothered to give public questions priority yet, it's all board questions, but as soon as we get that short of. We start doing public, which a, a lot of them tend to be. Um, and the, there is some little nuance, things like, um. We didn't really get into athletics per se as much, but, um, as we, you know, one example of something that would be in here that we'd be talking about is. Um, you know, there are certain things that over the span of time. Uh, there's been requests with athletics, you've heard people come to meetings and ask for it, that type of thing. This, this budget does reduce that pay-to-play. Um, it also tries to lower some of the impact on the families, and so that question was BQ twenty-eight, I think. And so BQ twenty-eight talks about some of the changes for athletics, um, and it reflected things that had been talked about. You know, the burden on families when they come to games, the, the fact that the pay-to-play is higher than any other district in our region. These are all things that, you know, and as an example, as you parse through it, these are parts of that that are articulated in different sections, but are also answered in some of them. And some of them aren't as easy to answer as they would seem, so they're gonna take longer, the healthcare insurance one is going to take a while to, to. Provide the best answer for, because it's, it's not split that way, it's not just a percent. The board in the town take their own chunks of what the increase is, and that's a more complicated thing than that, so.
Let's get started.
Well, I don't have a lot because I just saw the answers to the questions that were answered. Um, I think at the last meeting I had asked for the, kind of the price tags on the add-ons. And when I had done the math on that, at that meeting, it seemed like it was coming to like one point seven million. Because the contractual increases were like three point four, the total was five point one. And then, so that led me to, okay, these add-on somehow come up to one point seven. Um, but maybe there were other things, so this list on question six. Comes up to six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So, still kind of missing one point one million.
Yeah, it's athletics contractual, and it's, it's, I mean, it's all articulated in the lines of the document that we have, but, um. You know, it, I will continue to try to break down the components of it. You know, um, in, in some of the questions about where we're at, i- it has to do with, um. You know, these little pieces like tuition and little pieces like, not, not a ton for transport, but, um. You know, I, I guess I can answer questions as they come up about specific pieces to the budget, but I get another piece of it that wouldn't have been listed, say. In that table, because that table was really just meant to show you what the biggest drivers are. An example of athletics, athletics wouldn't necessarily be one of the biggest drivers, but it would comprise more of the difference that you're looking. Because we're taking on more of the costs, say, of, of athletics if the parent. Pay-to-play is going down, but that wasn't something explicitly listed in that tape, so there's little bits and pieces here and there like that. Um, you know, that, that are articulated in various places, but. Um, you know, I, I can only really, uh, it's all there, and so whatever aspect of it that you wanna go deeper into, you can.
Well, no, I mean, I guess, I'm just maybe kind of, and I don't expect you to necessarily pinpoint this, but. These add-on things like the pre-K, et cetera, are really add up to six hundred and fifty-eight thousand as an add-on to a. I don't know. Frightened to use the word level services, because I'm not really sure what that means, but, you know.
Right, right, that, that would be the other thing, is if somebody, if you wanna know what level, you have to tell me what you consider level. Because i- if level is just personnel, that's one thing, if you consider your I T T initiative also level. That's, that's something else, like it, is it just people, is it people plus programs? Transportation routes, you already cut those, do you wanna cut them back further, what's level, is it level to keep what you have? Do you wanna go back to what you had a few years ago? You know, so when somebody asks for level services. Somebody asked that, you have to, you'd have to specify for me what you consider to be level, is that, you know, the same transport, the same I T, the same staff. That type of thing.
But yeah, I'm just saying, and, and again, I'm using the old numbers, not the eleven point one, because I didn't really have that, but. On staffing, I did do a little comparison from the budget. Kind of looked like we were up three point four positions, but maybe that was more in the grant area and less in the paid area. And that enrollment went down by, is going down by twenty-seven students, would that be accurate?
I have to look at your numbers, um, but it sounds about right for the enrollment. I'd have to look at what you're talking about for staff.
Nesdak thing, it's always like, oh, it's gonna stay the same or go up and it always goes down.
Well, here's the clarification on that, and I wanna be very clear that when you look at the Nesdak information. When we're saying it's going up, we're talking about the next ten years. So that in a year, and we've also talked about how fluctuation that we can say is twenty-seven becomes ten. Or in a year, we lose far fewer than we thought we would, you're going to see it go down a little bit each year to a certain, you know. Baseline, I think that's in the next two, two years or something, you hit your threshold and you're not going down that much. And then you start rising back up because the kids coming in, and the lower grades are higher than the ones going out, whereas you have these big classes going out. Enrollment is going up over the next ten years. So if you look at the forest for the trees, you see the enrollment going over the next ten years, if you look at one tree, you'll see it. Going down for that one year, so, and that hasn't been different, that's been in the, it has. Our projections have shown that year after year after year that you go, you know, you'll have these slight declines over the next, but you're hitting this. Sort of base, and then you're going back up, and, and it looks like it's accurate, and Nesdak seems to have been pretty accurate. I even doubted that year where there was a hundred and eighty-four K kids projected, and I think we all did. So I adjusted it to one sixty and it turned out being the one eighty-four that they set up with me, so they're pretty accurate in what they're saying, I, I, I do feel that that. That what they're putting out there is, you know, gonna come to pass. The other thing I've heard stated is that you have to make an adjustment for enrollment. And you have, I mean, you've reduced by like forty-nine teachers for the, the enrollment did go down over the last ten years, and it has across the whole state of Connecticut. But you've reduced those forty-nine teachers or so, I think it was that, it's in the superintendent proposed budget there, the span of like six to that to now. Um, it's the same block of time used each year roughly. So you, you know, you've gone down by that amount or, or roughly that about forty-something. So that adjustment's been made. And if you look at the, you know, the value of the dollar, it hurts the family, but it also hurts the school, the amount you're spending right now. Is not that different from a material. Is not that different from a material point of view because of inflation than the amount you were spending. Decades. Um, it's about the same value dollar now. But what's changing is the cost of everything is radically higher. Um, special ed has exploded. You know, there's so many things that Connecticut schools are grappling with. Um, that's, it's part of the picture here that. You know, you have to cover so many more things and more requirements than you ever did before. It's it's just a changed landscape in school. Um, so it's, it's a tough thing, but you you're getting a, you're getting a good value for what you're providing here in town. Um, it's good education. Um, the adjustments have been made. Your your enrollment is leveling off and going back up. Um, and um, you know, you're doing a great job. So now it's just a question of with your priorities, you know, what. Of any of them, do you want to try to grapple with in any year like this year, knowing it's a different fall year?
Uh, word again, I'm very, uh. Extremely frustrated, disoriented. At the last meeting, I was gonna mention a few things. I was told to wait for seizure. We're only have a top-level thing in two weeks about. Time to submit your questions, so I went ahead. Believe it's a Friday or the Saturday after that. Meeting and went ahead and submitted, I don't know, about six or seven or eight of these. Questions. I wasn't part of the sixty-something percent that. Put their questions in within the last couple of days. Um. So I'm just a little frustrated, said the least. Regards to even, I was busy this afternoon. I didn't even know this was even out, so more or less I walked in the door, so. I feel very kind of shocked with not even knowing what to even. Talk about. So I always hit a couple of top-level things that I. Think that we should at least get a baseline and direction for this, because we only have a couple more meetings before we. You know, present this to the town. So, you're looking at these, some large numbers and different contractual items. Um, I know we had asked. You know, to see about some of these pathways, the pre-K for. The resource officer, additional training, um, increased tier M T S S. Support for intervention. Um, to be honest with you, my, where I'm leaning, I mean, obviously we worked. Crazy eleven point something percent budget, just because it really shocked me and many people in town and I'm sure other people on this board. Um, so I think, I'm just giving my personal opinion here. Um, I think we should. Kind of act this pre-K for your program um to start with. Um, just for cost and other issues, some other research that is, that I've been doing has been presented to me as well. There's those two sides to some benefits, some not benefits, so don't want to get a full debate about that tonight, but I'll just, I'll just. Ask that that be removed. Um, the pathways program. So I know many times over the year plus that I've been on the board, um. I know some of these pathway programs are presented that does not um either zero or a very, very minimal cost to a district. To provide that. Is that still the case? That has been put into this budget for this number two on page uh eight. To expand the pathways programs for two additional and next year and then. So it's two additional, both the twenty-five and six and six and seven and one each year. Um, I don't know if you have that.
So prior to, so um, what was called Lighthouse years ago and Pathways has never actually been funded by the Board of Ed. And it's so, and even without the, you know, it's been funded by the grants and donation money mostly. So um, we were able to create the engineering one and the business. Now, we would be moving into creating more of those. Um, that right now for engineering business, there's a plan of study and they can do the plan of study. And I should actually have the two people that have been, or three, three people. Or that have been working on this coming to a presentation to the board. I think we have done presentations in the curriculum committee. Um, where they talk about everything they're doing, because it's a massive amount of things that are being done. And I do think that kids are, young adults rather, are uh using, utilizing it, gravitating to it. It's been an expansion of decades. And that it has kept them here, because the 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 ones going out are going out for things that, you know, we don't, we can't. Music, art, dance and things like that, but we don't have um that way, or we, or they don't think we have. So this would be expanding pathways into humanities aspects, into music, art and dance, into some of those things that are dragging. Are that are attractive, that are advertised in movie theaters and on, you know, bulletin boards that we can't do. So um, this would be the first time we're actually making an investment in it as a board. And it would be about twenty thousand. I think it's, it's a ten thousand seventeen. It's about seventeen to twenty thousand and most of it is.
Per year?
Is paying for the people. Yeah, the people to, because you need people to run the internships. You need people to. You know, again, these are, this is work beyond the typical contractual work of a teacher. So, so that's what this mainly is, is funding of those stipends for those people.
But I just a quick, uh, I was one with quicks. I get quite a few other points. Um, so the pathway is, so you're looking at twenty thousand for the five and six. Twenty-five, twenty-six year. And then you're looking at forty thousand potentially for the twenty-six and twenty-seven year, because you'd have. One currently at twenty thousand and you're gonna add another one for another twenty.
Well, it's right now, it's it's three people and one of them would do the majority of the work for about ten. The other two would split some of the work for about three and seven, so it's twenty thousand for three people and they split their hours a certain way.
I'm saying, when you're, you're, we're looking at in this expanding it for two additional. We're adding in another twenty-six and twenty-seven school year, maybe ladies.
Depends. It could stay similar to what it is. It depends on how many, when we put it out there, because we don't want to say we're gonna run something and then we can't run it. But if we got it approved, then we'd put out surveys saying, what would you like to see the next pathway be? And if it was three or four of them came up, we'd try to do one or two. We'd have, we'd see how many people we needed to do that. So it could be another ten next year, but it could also be possibly the same. It would just mean that we're officially taking it on as a board and we've never done that.
Okay.
So it's, it's making it an actual funded program of the.
All right, thank you. So uh, uh, for me personally, I'm, I'm not. Against the pathways, but I think with this large increase, I think we might need to settle that for time being. We find a. A grant maybe of one of our new curriculum directors can find a pathways grant, maybe that's the direction we should go with that funding. Especially if we've never taken out as a board previous, I don't think with the, that we need to take anything with extra on. Trying to at least just provide the best that we can for what we're going. This uh, the the school resource, safety, all of these trainings and all that, I I'm a hundred and ten percent on board with. All of that funding line item to whatever we need to work with the town, get that relationship and get people hired, you know, tomorrow. Um, the multi-tier support, um, I'm in favor of that. Um, do you pot potentially have um. The cost for that number four initiative that we were, I'm from the, I'm still referencing page eight here. Um, is there a dollar figure for this?
Yeah, I want to make sure.
People.
Which, which particular?
So the six, so ten, so that's sixty thousand dollars. Would that be?
You're talking M T S S?
Yeah.
That's, I put it in the.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I guess that I haven't had time to review even one of these, so, all right. So sixty, so that'd be sixty grand for that initiative if the board decides everyone there move forward with that. Just, I'm trying to put dollar figures with these, uh, hopefully some of these help other people.
That most of those priorities are the board's priority area, like pathways are the board priority area.
Um, no, I completely understand why they're here. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to. In my mindset, believe that we, we, we. And I say we, I really do mean we, I I don't believe can put forward an eleven point one percent budget. I I'm a realist and it's just after last year's fiasco. Uh, she would say fiasco, but just tough times and and getting something passed and hearing from the town and hearing. You know, struggles of people and then there's the whole talk of the reassessments happening in town and. All of that on it, so I I just want to have some sense of where I, my personal direction is. In in this bunch. So I'm just kind of, some of this, I'm just speaking out loud, it's just kind of how I operate, so. I don't mean offense to anybody here. I'm sure there's a lot of people with other ideas than mine, so um. The other things that I had, um. Uh, I had a question in here and I I did see the answer, the transportation. So I know it, you had, I had mentioned that it said it was an eight point something percent increase, but yet. Per the contract, it only says a five percent increase. So now the, I think it's stated that there was some special education funding that went into that line item that pushed that up. Uh, so much higher. Does that, does that five percent or is that line items still include the two discounted? Routes of what was it by a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars that we cut at the end of last cycle?
We didn't add anything back. We carried over what you have.
So, so it's, it was reduced two hundred grand already? Or or one twenty-five? I didn't know the exact number. I was just trying to recall from all the different numbers that we talked about. So that budget line item then references the school special ed and. Um. Uh, transports to other towns, including the regular bus routes, minus the two bus routes that we cut. Is that correct statement? Okay, okay.
And this year is actually in the contract with the company, you're on the lower end now of like near the five percent or.
Yes.
The previous years, but you cut other stuff.
Okay.
Too, so.
Um, apologize a lot.
You do?
No, it's. So I lost where I was on this thing here. I should have my Facebook book here. Um, and then the insurance, each chip. Um, I asked for some, I mean, I think that's still kind of, we don't really have much answered on that, so we'll have to revisit that at the. Next meeting, we're just the largest budget lineup, so we'll dig into that. So where uh, I, Tammy had mentioned for the governor, Tammy, our ref. Um, had mentioned the governor made a statement, I think I talked the at the curriculum, uh, communications. Uh, committee meeting regarding that. There were some funds that were going to be um frozen regards to not being decreased. Um, I don't know what specifically those funds or where that line item is. Is that something you can point us in the direction or what number? And where that relates to whether we're off a little bit in our budget, because we thought maybe we're gonna get less or how does that play out?
So it's on page twenty-four of the superintendent's board, superintendent's proposed budget. Under budget funding testaments, but I think what she's referring to is the E C S funding. Um, and that the E C S funding will follow the states. Uh, the state had this kind of walk down of E C S funding. And that it will follow that, that plan that they had set forth years ago and won't do anything beyond that. So um, I think this is the, the figure that we have here was the figure that was part of that state plan. And should reflect the amount.
So nine million, one thirty-one, one sixty should be the number instead of nine million, one zero five, five two eight?
Well, no, that the projected for next year in the walk down is like eight million, eight hundred and six, eight eighteen, and that was from the state documents. Um, so if that went up by, you know, if they ended up giving us more, remember that E C S funding goes to the town.
Oh, oh, I, 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 I'm not seeing that.
Look, fiscal year twenty-six, what it looks like it will be based on the.
Okay, I got you. Okay, I I I see.
Yeah, so it's eight eight oh six, eight one eight. That's from the state's docs. Um, and so if that changes, then it would be beneficial, but it's.
Yeah, half a million dollars beneficial.
Right, to the town, though. It goes, it goes, well, it would be the difference between nine million one and eight million eight, so about three hundred, what, two hundred thousand? So, but that's the.
No, I have eight million, eight oh six, uh, three, I apologize.
No, no, no worries. So that goes to the town. That that, the town E C S, it doesn't, probably you've heard the talk about that. It doesn't, it doesn't mean it's for education. But it's good for the town. The town gets more resources from the state to utilize for what it needs. It. It has the name E C S, but you don't get that money. It just represents what goes to the town. To offset the cost of education in all the towns in Connecticut and they can use it however they want.
No, I understand. I think our budgets are aligned. I don't know. We sure can adjust this three hundred thousand.
We can't adjust our budget three hundred thousand, but they will have three hundred thousand more on the town. E C S.
So why are we projecting then a decrease that we're actually, uh, suppo- I I understand what you're saying, the legality of. Goes to the town, the town more or less hands it over to the, because it funds education.
Well, they don't hand it over to the, to education per se. It. It is, it, you might as well call that town cost sharing, because it goes to the town. Your budget does not receive that money. That, that is a town offset. So they will be, they're generally, if that, if they get. Let's say they get nine million one and then they're projecting for the state's projection eight eight. They are three hundred thousand to the plus to utilize as they see fit for anything they see fit. They're not giving it to you, but they're not taking it away from you either. It's not the board's money to contend.
Chris, Marianne, take note. So, um, all right, thank you for clarifying what that statement from the governor and what line item that was.
And and I'm assuming you started the E C S, because that's what I'm seeing you talking about.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Um. All right, and then the other question debate hot topic that I just. I had, I checked with the, um, there was a few other people in the room with the athletic director. Regarding, I had a few other questions in there. Um, it was many um athletic line items that were really. Jumping off percentage-wise. Um, from officials to stipends to, I don't know, a few other different line items. I know there was a, like he had stated. There was, is trying to curate less. Uh, the um cost to the um. Parents of students that do athletics in town. But just reference, some of these numbers have really um. Gone up substantially, whether we had, you know, I know that I think he had stated that like the official, there was some COVID money that wasn't used, they were. You know, paying some of that. And I know some of the athletic transportation um went up substantially. So I'm just trying to think, you know. I'm not saying that to, to cut, not cut, but I do think we need to have a more in-depth conversation regarding the funding. For um, um. Yeah, it says athletics is up sixty-three point four six percent or a hundred and twenty-five plus thousand dollars. Um, with a multitude of areas. So I just think we need to, you know, weigh the pros and cons, costs or liabilities on. Where we go ahead and raise this hundred twenty-five thousand, six sixty, whether it's beneficial. For some things, not other things, um, in versus they getting a reading specialist, right, like. But I, I think, you know, I'm not saying we decide that right here in this moment that I'm speaking, but just thinking of ideas like. It's gotta be some give and take. Um, funding one area, not others, and whether this select group of students is. Doing this as a voluntary basis, yet somebody's not necessarily voluntarily coming to school, learn to read. I mean, that's our state mandate to provide. Education for somebody to read. So I, I, I think this needs to be discussed further as we continue this path with the budget. I know it's not the most favorite topic to talk about and people. Do get excited when we start talking about athletics, but I also get excited when I want a kid to be able to read too, so. Have the people there to support that. So I'll pause that now. Um, and Jaden said I would like another.
Go around myself.
And I'll pass it to Bill. And I'll pass it to Bill.
Uh I'm sure everyone's heard about another school shooting in Nashville today, there are two dead. Uh our SRO budget line item. If we couldn't get an SRO with the current budget, how are we gonna get to full time by just doubling it?
Well, because it wasn't the budget limiting it as much as the contract. So. Before you were going to theoretically, let's say people actually would stick with the job because it's only twenty four hours. If they stuck with the job, you had two twenty four hour people for seventy, no, seven, seven. So what this does now is it says you can have two full time municipal council officers. That's the truth. And so that means that for that rough amount of seventy four, seventy seven, you could have one full time. And now for a hundred fifty, you can have two. Full time municipal officers. So you increase the amount of money so that it can pay for two full time. And the contract changes, so you're allowed to hire two full time and off we go. We have two full time. We can.
Is seventy five thousand dollars for a full time SRO competitive or are we gonna have a conversation? Three months from now saying we need more money for that?
It's competitive because the people that are applying to that job are retired police officers that have pensions usually and they usually pick. Uh the the benefit is it's ten months and you get all the school vacations off, all the the kids days off you're getting off. So you get your pension plus seventy five, plus all those days off. Usually they like, uh, it's appealing to them.
So then the the follow-up question to that is with the difficulty in finding part-time people. For the seventy seven thousand dollars. Why haven't we taken the initiative step with all these shootings to find one full-time person for the seventy seven thousand percent? We couldn't?
No, couldn't. That was the whole.
That was the whole part of the.
prohibited by desk. Your contracts with the town and the state.
Got you. All right.
The our laws limited us to a twenty four hour.
Got you. All right. So now that restriction is lifted.
So they just signed it and uh we just got a copy of that that I'm gonna post to the dashboard. And so there there's a few final housekeeping steps, but that's why it's in the bubble because. We should be able to uh start posting for a full time.
So we should be able to, even before maybe this is all approved, be posting for one full time.
I have to work with the town. I think we would post for both. Like, let's say the budget passed, we'd post for both immediately as soon as we could. We have to spend ten thousand for the town to get certified.
Okay.
You know, and that's, there's a process involved with that. There'll be work on our end to do that with in partnership. It'll probably be a lot of cost and. And so uh that that those little pieces need to get worked out, but the biggest obstacle here has been the contract limitation. So no contract limitation, I'll I'll put in the hours. We'll get this done. We'll get the ten thou-, you know, to pay ten, they have to come, they have to certify you. That if there's a set of things you have to have done and.
What's the guestimation of time before I have someone in one of the schools?
Well, you know, I I think we could, if if we pass the budget in the second rep, uh, what is it, first Tuesday in May? And you don't have any other referendum. Uh and we can get that certification done and we'd have to get it done after that because what's the point of paying for your certification if you can't do the officer?
We couldn't get it, we couldn't get the certification done before that.
Well, you have no officers to certify because they, there's no jobs. Uh so, but you know, somewhere between, let's say it passes the first Tuesday in May, which we all know it will. And that'd be super optimistic about where you land as a board. And um. And then we spend the next couple of months placing and the next couple of months doing the ten grand. My goal would be by the beginning of the following year to have people in place.
So that's the reality that.
That's ambitious and everything has to fall down, but but I I'm saying at least in the next school year, my hope would be by the beginning of the next school year.
Yeah.
I can't see any reason that it wouldn't be in the next school year somewhere, but I would want that done before, you know, the begin, if we could.
Right. Okay, um. Thank you for that. And I'm I'm in the same boat as a lot of people. I'm glad we're starting to get answers. I'm less prepared now because we didn't start until three, so I'm assuming we're gonna regularly be getting answers on the. On the um, on the Q and A, on the dashboard. Um but I was doing a little bit of um comparing. Budgets, um our budget book compared to other towns' budget book. And I'm noticing in in some other towns. That there's not an increase in their numbers. For student services, the outside tuition rates. But yet in our budget book, we've got a fifty eight percent increase. And I know there could be some differences in how they create their budget. But it it just, it it just doesn't look like when when we're talking tuition. That there could be that big of a difference between districts if it were, if we're sending kids. To the same places or similar places. Why is ours fifty whatever percent higher?
I don't think it is. I think you'd have to tell me what towns and I'll tell you where.
Ellington.
What's nested. So I'll I'll go look and find what it's nested. They have a different finance structure than we do. Um. So I I, you know, they also though have received a lot more support for some of their internal programs. So they've expanded, like we have LEAP and we have TTA. They have as many or more than we do of that kind. So that money might not be in tuition, but it also might be in some of their other programs. But I can uh I can look into it. Ellington, I live in Ellington, so I'm a citizen there.
Figured you might be have uh an added interest in that.
Um and they, you know, they they do, you know, we have the choice conversation. They they get, I think, close to hundreds of thousands or. More from that, from our earlier conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's some offsets, but um but I can look into and tell you kind of where that, where that fits.
I know the 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 specific thing that I'm looking at is the. The the lead placement, the agency placement, unassigned placement, and they've got. You know, three and four students over the last couple of years and the projection is is the same. Uh I'm sorry, five students, but the number actually goes down. Um and with with the magnet schools and the Voag placement and um unanticipated DCF and corp placement. Um you know, those numbers in their budget stays the same. But you know, it just seems like ours jumps a lot where there's, there stays the same. And again, I know.
I can, I can.
Little different.
Little different, sure.
At this point, that's what I've got to.
Yeah, um. I loaded questions on the FAQ too, so I'll wait first. Some of those specifics to come back. Um but just from things I've looked at or some comments on things we talked about. So on the SRO thing, and Bill, I think you have it now. It was really confusing, but just for the sake of being able to like. Stress it publicly. So the issue was that we were posting two part-time positions. And we couldn't find people that wanted those part-time positions. So the issue was. Being allowed to post for a full-time position where Dr. Willett said all along, he thought we could find a full-time position. It was just that we weren't able to post for one. Um and I actually attended the town council meeting on Tuesday and. What he just said was actually announced there. So it was just Tuesday night that the town counselors also found out, or at least in the public meeting. That that MOU had been signed um with desk, which was our first step in that process to being able to turn that over. So I guess my question then, so that makes sense. I just want it, it was so.
No, 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 it's 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 absolutely clear now. And and I forgot about that, that contract piece. So I got that.
Yeah.
That's good.
Um so but I guess now my question from it is that. I I know that there's still some, it sounds like there's still some work that needs to be done there, but. Could we, at least in the meantime, since we have the budget right now to have two? Part-time, could we roll it into one full-time and have somebody impose that position before this full year ends?
We have to get certified.
Well, could we start that process up?
Well. I know that it is a uh, it's a meaty process that I've never done before and it's made for the state. From the state is a new expectation of municipalities. So um, you know, we I we just got a copy of the MOA. We have to have our attorney look at that, figure out that landscape. And then we have to figure out what it takes to certify a town. Can you certify a town before you have the people, like either the chicken or the egg thing? You have to get a person hired and then process through certification. I don't know. So I, can we do that in the next, like February, March, April, May? Uh frankly, if I'm being correct, I don't think we can pull that that off that fast. Um one thing you can do, if you chose to jettison the idea of municipal officers, you could ask me to pursue one state trooper. They're more expensive um from a pay point of view, but you don't have to support any of the other pieces of it. But you probably can only afford one at times for that sort of thing.
No, I would just, if there is a path to have someone this school year, I would just want us doing everything we could to do that. So if you're gonna start the process, I would just say let's at least start that process and fill a position that we could possibly post now and then worry about. The added one.
Well, I we. Yeah, I mean, if it's po- I'll move it as forward fast, like move it as forward as quickly as it. But I don't know what this the the certification requires exactly.
Okay, um and then. I just, I wanted to touch on the enrollment piece, which I know is also another fun topic that we guys, that we always talk about. So. You know, as much as NASDAQ and all of that stuff, I think that, in my opinion, it, you know, the real need that we get is when we sit. At the rounds and with the administrators at the budget workshop and in. This particular rounds and in rounds before, they, you know, again, one of the things they mentioned was the high class sizes at TIF. And that if they didn't have the structure that they had, you know, having that intervention time at math lab. For that particular thing, they can't, they can't do what they were doing. They can't work as. The teacher doesn't have the opportunity to sit with six children and do that while there's another twenty children that aren't able to do anything. So. We saw that, we saw the class sizes, we saw the amount of people, and then we saw it in the data team meeting. When they were talking about the kids that were currently, you know, in the intervention, I'll call it the intervention lab with Mr. McCarthy. And the the kids that they were swapping out and kids that needed to bring in and and understand that these are kids that may be having a particular problem for. A certain amount of time, a certain amount of lessons, but can easily, are are the teachers are worried they're falling behind. They're going to be in a high now for the next lessons. These kids then, of course, can escalate towards higher intervention, five oh fours, IP's, mean it happens. They had at one point, it was like when he, you know, the teachers each did their thing and they were like. Okay, I need to add, you know, student A or C. I'm gonna take off this student. I'm gonna add this student. He looked at the list at one point. He said, that's fifteen kids. So now they all had to then reassess and take more kids out of that. So my point is, is that when, and then from the rounds with the administrators, I think we're. I think it were a real max for K. I think we hit it, if not almost hit it, K through two. TIS is consistently talking about their high class sizes. I was there a lot in that school and I did a lot of the the copies for those classes. Those classes were twenty three. Students, maybe up to twenty six. And now we've reduced our high school. I asked again this year, as I always ask, and it's on the FAQ, but I asked each administrator I spoke with, there were. However, many positions were asked in this budget, third positions, but we've only got seven and a half in the book. What are the other positions you've asked for? The high school year over year asks for the positions back that we've taken away. And, you know, in the last couple of years, from my point of view, what I've seen is we've taken a lot from the high school in terms of positions. And some from the middle school, um because we are very limited in what we can take away from K through five. So when they're talking about, you know, that they have, you know, so many students that had to, they had to. Reduce and get rid of a botany class, for example, which, you know, you need. Some of our, the science classes, you need cer- certain certifications for, but they had to get rid of a botany class. But there was so much interest and so many students were not able to take that class, that they have a botany club, but now they can't offer it as a class, you know, because we cut. Two sci- we reduced by two science position classes here. Um the art teacher, they've been asking year over year, year since I started to replace an art teacher, their most requested electives. They have to turn down, they have to say no to eighty to one hundred students every year in that area. So I just. I can come up with a lot more reasons and I will. Um but just to touch on that, the enrollment piece, our class sizes are high enough. They are, and we're limiting children on what they can take. And I was somebody who got, you know, who's gotten falls over the summer that the kid can't take the class if they want. So. Pathways, um I have a different point of view on pathways. I, you know, what I really like, I talked about the curriculum supervisors as well as the curriculum director and supervisor was there. And the high school about pathways and expanding the pathways. I absolutely love the idea that if we can expand the pathways, they're going to do it based on what the students are saying that they're wanting. What they think that they're going to see is a push towards health sciences. Um again, to use my own real world experience, my son's a freshman. He signed up immediately for the business pathway. I had access to his emails. Connected some of my board emails, so every time he gets an email, I get a hop up for that too. But um. And there's offerings for that that I would have never known about, you know, things that they can do, places they can go. Um. I actually just checked his email, which he never cleans out, but apparently did. So I was gonna give you actual examples of things, you know, where they get. I'm gonna just pick something out. I don't know if it's right. Like they get to visit Rentschler for an activity or they, this or that. To be able to do that in the health sciences world is huge. You know, that's them being able to go to a hospital, you know, et cetera. We have a lot of people who are still talking about the loss of the childcare program a couple of years ago, which was much more than I think what people think it is. It wasn't actual curriculum with actual classes. You know, to be able to develop that and obviously everything health sciences. And again, we have these kids who have lost sciences. And the opportunity to take science electives, it's clearly a very popular career path for our kids going to college. I would, I very much would like to expand that, you know, Brian, you talked about like what excites you, you know, reading and I'm. All for the reading specialist, everything, especially at the younger levels, like. This excites me, like right now I have two kids in high school and the college tracks and. The things that I want them and every other child to be able to be competitive at and to have experience with. And then. Somebody brought up and I wrote it down, but it was a great, it's not just even about, you know. Knowing that they're going to a particular field, like they get to do internships in these, in these pathways. It also might be knowing what you don't want to do, you know, so I just, I just think it's. For the 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 low amount of that it costs us today and going forward, that it's, it's a way to really grow our high school experience. And um get our kids excited and competitive towards college. I know I have more notes on that too. I just can't get through all of my writing today. And then. When we talk about pre-K. Not, not, I'm not gonna heavy push pre-K, but I would like to say that all of the reasons why. We discuss starting a pre-K program, I agree with. Wholeheartedly. I think they are what's right for families, for students, for parents, for our community. For our district financially, I do. I understand that it could be a big lift with everything else that we want to do. I hope we can do some of it. Is the cost you laid out in one of the questions, you know? Let's call it, you know, three hundred and thirty K. Is that, that's a plus for the teachers alone? Is there an additional cost for the preschool above just hiring teachers for it?
I mean, you know, there may be some uh material things that we have to, you know, we have to share and utilize differently, but. Some of those pre-K kids are the kids that used to be able to go to K, but can't now because of. So there's a whole group of kids from the burmuns that are, you know, that are out now pushed out. And so this is something that, you know, we would then be able to just serve almost, you know, some of those kids would be the same population we were serving before. So from a material point of view.
Nothing significant.
Not, not, you know, not really, but from the staff point of view, we, you know, because you're creating a programming that.
Okay. And, you know, we just talked about this in curriculum, um because we were discussing open choice. And, you know, you had said that we would be more favorable to, because seeing that families, families want to start in K. They would start in pre-K, so we would be a more favorable option. Think. We compare, I think at one point you compare like South Windsor has a lot of open.
Use Ellington, you see how has hundreds of thousands that they get from open choice.
Do they have?
But that's not why you do open choice. It's just that, so to use an example, a program that offsets some costs and has mutual benefits for all involved. You know, talent kids, uh, talent students from Hartford, talent students from talent are the same, they're talent students. But if they're coming, there is a a an offset to your pre-K program by having kids. Come from that program and many, many more will come because that it's offered where they're coming from.
The correlation I'm trying to draw is that the schools that are successful with a program like open choice. Do they also have preschool program?
Uh, yeah, yeah, in fact, that's one of the things that draws people to it.
Right, so, again, maybe something that we're able to do this year, but I really feel that it should stay on our radar, especially when we talk about. Again, I believe it's what's good for students and if, you know, I talk to everyone about it at the, um, the rounds with the administrators and why it's good for students. Um, to start in our district, however, if we wanna focus on financials. It's financially something that would be good for us as, as you progress. I, you know, I'm not gonna go through it as much as Brian did, but I would like to say that I also talked to, um, everyone that I spoke to about the P P T facilitator. Um, I did put a question on the F A Q to maybe quantify that, um, because people that maybe not are that um, familiar with five oh fours and and P P T meetings and the amount of work and time that goes into it, maybe that would be helpful. But this is something that everyone in the district said it would help them incredibly, and I believe that it would be the right thing to do for students and families as well. So I believe that this is something that we should really work on. It's something that make sure that we're meeting all of our state requirements, we're doing, again, we're doing the right things by students and by families and, um, we're doing the right things by our administrators, which then does circles down as well, so it's, it's a full circle position in my mind, um, the social worker. Again, every single year, we discuss the need for social workers, um, I believe if the T M S has a true, real need to have a social worker that sits on their premises, they do every year, they have plenty of data to show it. Or they ask for it every year, they have plenty of data to show why they need it. And in comparison, I have a question on it on the F A Q too, but I already partially know the answer. When we compare districts in our D R G, they have a lot more resources in that area than we do. And at the middle school and high school level, I think both schools should have a social worker. Um, I'm incredibly in support of the M T S S, the, this is student support. This is so many things that we talk about, again, it's beneficial for every single reason, it's beneficial to students, families, our staff. It's beneficial to the district financially. Um, I really think that that was a great goal that we came to as a board, and I think that that is something we can and should tackle, at least partly. On page twelve, can you, what is the job coach do, sorry? I'll think of other thoughts while you're taking your medicine. Yeah, exactly.
So job coach is typically working with a talent transition academy. Uh, and you have to provide these services for students in programs that are eighteen to twenty-two years old. Um, and particularly, it's, it's ju- it's on the job, job training, it's part of the required aspects of a program like that. We are required to, um, there are kids, uh, young adults that, um, that are requiring services from eighteen to twenty-two and through their, through their entire twenty-second year. So, um, this would be to adequately cover what is now part of the I E Ps. And those tend to expand, or, you know, depending on who's in the program. And what their needs are.
A rough estimate or what job coaches? What that would cost, I'm having a hard time, it seems like there's a lot of things in different places.
Yeah, the job coaches are thirty-one thousand five hundred and eight, three dollars. Plus four thousand three hundred for quite, thirty-five thousand eight hundred and three.
And then. I really appreciate the way that this is done, because this is what we're asked for, so I value that a great deal, but I'm wondering, um. The level service thing goes over my head, so I'm not gonna kind of really understand that, what I would like to know is, what would it cost to just keep everything exactly the same with the regular rate of inflation, is that what we're looking at on page eight? With the contractual?
Well, so I, I, the, uh, to be frank, um, I had, uh, that, the question of level service, which you're not necessarily asking, but just to clarify. I find that one a hard one to answer, without knowing exactly what each person considers, so for instance, if the board wants to ask a question like that, saying, what if we kept all staff the same, but everything else, you know, reduced it to, to what you have, you know, for prior year? That would mean cutting the entire tech initiative, you know, off goes that, like other things like that. Um, and so, um, you wouldn't necessarily have a service in terms of everybody has the grown books in certain grades, but you might have the same number of teachers in, in the, in the grades, right? So services, if they're transportation, I T, things like that, then it's one cost if they're that plus staff, it's another cost, that type of thing. Um, you know, so I, you know, a typical year, a typical year where you, you're not, you know, having certain fluctuations. Um, you'll notice that we talk about it generally as like in that four percent, three or four percent zone. The projection last time we did a five year was five point oh five percent. Uh, that was the last projection done prior to the budget process in May. That if not, you know, not a lot changed and you kept initiatives, you were at five oh five per se, right? But that's including a lot of the tech things, and if you don't consider those, those level. Um, then that will be lower. Um, and so this budget is roughly seven percent, if nothing, nothing changed, but nothing changing has a lot of things in it, right, that have increased just as a part of the program and or have come back. Even what was talked about in athletics, when you go down those lines, transportation costs more, so we had to do thirty-five thousand more in that. Um, the COVID budget, there were COVID funds that took and lowered artificially lowered our average budget for athletics. Now you need a certain amount, that's how they keep that, right?
Right.
So like you can cut back athletics, you can cut back transportation again, you could cut back I T again, you could cut back all kinds of things and keep the same number of staff and bring that percent down, but would some people consider that level? They might not, you could increase pay to play, you know, that type of thing to two fifty, that would take a chunk out. You're not reducing the teachers, you're keeping the same level number of people, but the programs are changing, it's not the same athletics program. Not the same tech program. Does that make sense? So if you, if you guys give me a, um, like a, a very precise, like keep all staff, but the rest of it is open for reduction, then I can come up with proposals about what the rest of it is. Or you can say, we value these programs more than these programs, but we wanna keep staff the same. Give me that recipe, you know, we create a scenario for you with that recipe. There are three scenarios for you with that recipe, and then you can make a decision based on those things. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, it does. Um, I'm just wary of last year's. Last year, the whole thing, I don't know, I don't, I'm not gonna qualify that, um. You know, I don't wanna put something before the town that's useless. You know, that, that's not gonna actually. I mean, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me, it needs to be something that's actually a balance, you know, you know, sub as well. Yeah, because, you know.
I mean, what, you know, you did, um, your process is nowhere near over.
Right, no, yeah.
And what you've done is, you've taken every bit of feedback I think he receives. You know, like the people that were cut out of the burrs, now their kids can't attend kindergarten when they used to be able to attend. You know, and, and then sort of equity issues with that, and then, and then in the athletics, and people really frustrated about how much that costs and how their kids are getting fleeced, and you know, these are all the things you've heard over a span of like a year or eighteen months. This budget addresses many of the things you've heard over those months. Now you have the really hard job of figuring out which of those things you've heard over the last few months are going to be the priorities that you carry through in the budget. Versus what you wish you could do, which is, I think what your priorities really were is what you really wish you could.
So I think the issue becomes sort of. You know, we, this is not a household budget, right? This is the budget, it's like more like a business budget, right, which you wouldn't do for just one year. You would be making projections so that you don't end up being, uh, penny wise and pound foolish, right? So that we don't end up with these high costs for special education when things like, you know, additional support in the classrooms helps to make you know, kids feel like they can, they're in an environment where they can learn, right? When we get kids at match on, yes, there's a lot of behavioral issues, but some of those could have been perhaps curbed within the school system itself, before we had sent somebody out and you're, you know, I'm charging them a hundred thousand dollars to take care of a, a child that could maybe have, uh, done better if there was, for instance, some sort of behavioral health support for, within the school as well as these, you know, the models that, um, help kids until be, I hate using this word, I feel like I'm gonna get skewed using it, but you know, there's difference between equity and equality, right? Like, we don't wanna school that has disequality, because that means we're just providing the same thing to everybody. We want equity because it actually provides what is needed to make, you know, kids learn the way that they can and get through everything, and I don't know if you work in industries where you talk about this a lot, but we talk about it a fair amount in healthcare. And the way that, um, the, the best, the, the best way I can describe it is equity is, imagine you're at a baseball game, right, and there's a fence. And Bill is like, what, six two? Bill can see over the fence. I'm five foot two, I can't see over the fence, I can't watch the game. So equality would be giving me a box and I can look over the fence and see the game. But you're assuming I can get on the box, right? That's not equitable, equity would be taking the fence down, right? And I think that that's what a lot of the things that, um, this holds, you know, with the, our school would benefit from would be more equity in the classroom, and that does mean spending a little bit on making sure that, um, there, that those supports for teachers are in the classroom and they're able to really pay attention to what each child specifically needs in order to learn that. Um, but we have to weigh those things against things like safety. Right, which can't forego. So, I, I don't know, I'm hoping that we can all work together to come up with something that really makes good sense for the town, also to review when the time comes. And I appreciate your work, thank you. And as a reminder, it's nine thirty, so.
Dana.
Hi. I don't have. Um, other than, um, I just want us to be, first of all, I appreciate the budget, I did, I did, um, you know, the thorough budget put together. Um, I did submit some of my questions to the Q, the the submission form, um, I saw they had a chance to review all the answers and answers back, and I just, I know Dr. Willett's still working on a lot of it as well. Um, I think that we need to be cognizant of, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about the S R L conversation. Um, I'm excited about, you know, uh, the M T S S conversation. Um, job coach, social worker, social worker at T M S. Um, all of these things that Dr. Willett presented us in this budget. Where, again, when I went to, I was able to spend time with Jen Webster in the rounds, as well as every single administrator, sorry, hang on. Every single administrator, um, each school. And they talked about instructional coaches, world language, interventionist. Jen specifically said we have two at Berchtesgaden, uh, for E L A and for math. Two at T I S for, for math and three at T I S for E L A, one at T M S for math and two at T M S for E L A, nothing at the high school. Um, you know, needing that support with that, you know, uh, T I S talked about Pira's and instructional support, um, and those kind of things, so they talked about each of them talked about social worker in every single, um, round that I went to. Um, and specifically, the supports are needed more and more and more. Um, even at the B G P, Birch Grove primary level, um, Dr. Uh, sorry, Dr. Willett. Mr. Swanson and Ms. Gugliotta stopped, talked a lot about in early on intervention. Um, the class sizes are increasing with that huge bubble coming into kindergarten. This year and the next two years for those COVID children, those babies born in COVID. Um, huge bubble, which causes, uh, you know, them to they're trying to keep it down, but with those huge bubbles, it, it, they're struggling to keep the class numbers down as they go. Um, but I just think that we need to definitely keep an eye on social workers in the, in the grades. Um, world language needs to be a conversation. Um. Those were some of my topics, again, I'll continue to put stuff in the Q and A. Um, Jen, you hit a lot of, a lot of the things that I had taken notes on, so I don't wanna reiterate what Jen said. Um, but I do wanna say, you know, spending time in those instructional, not the instruction rounds, in the, in the rounds at the high school is paramount to give us the lens as to what our educators and our administrators are craving to help educate our students. Um, so, uh, thank you, Dr. Willett, for putting that together, it was, it was a huge eye opening experience, year after year after year. As I go through it, I learn more and more from my administrators, um, as well as our maintenance team and our athletic department and all of that. So, I think that if we really take to heart and listen to what they had to say and make and try to, to formulate this into our Board of Ed budget and be cognizant of one with our discussion of, of what we're we're talking about in monetary capacity, as well as in a capacity that, that, um, supports our students and staff. Um, I think we can come up with a fruitful budget for, for our town, but I, I will say that, um, we continue to talk about the interventionists, not enough. We continue talking about ment- social, you know, mental health and social emotional health, and we don't have enough. There's not even a social worker, uh, we need the social worker at the middle school level. Um, we're missing that and the, in the prime parts of these kids development, so I think we need to look at what those look like in the gaps that we have in those respective schools and what our administrators are asking us for. Um, that's all I have for now.
Yeah, the only thing, I, I, and I actually, through our discussion, I submitted a few more questions in the, in the, uh, the Q and A, my god. I know, um, and, and so, I, 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 I typically wait until the second or third, uh, budget meeting to sort of ask anything that's outstanding, but I think Bill's comment about the S R Os and talking about, and Dr. Willett, you're, you're mentioning of the state trooper, you know, for the remainder of the year. It, it sparked interest in my, in my head a little bit in terms of what that would look like, and, and so I'll wait until the question's answered in the, in the, um, F A Q or the Q and A, whatever. Um, and then I did have a couple of other questions, just eh, generally about, you know. Eh, eh, I wish there was some sort of objective way to, 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 to sort of create a cost benefit analysis, what does something cost? What are we benefiting, but it's so hard because it's, every student is so individual. And so a lot of the things that we're seeing on this list, and it pains me that, that, I mean, a lot of this stuff is gonna be considered for the chopping block, but uh, so many of these, you know, eh, even benefiting one student, I mean, we are doing, we are doing something there. And so, a lot of this pains me to see that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have to negotiate in terms of what is kept, but um, I wasn't sure if there is some sort of, you know, uh, measuring, measuring tool, measuring stick for for, you know, the pathways program, you know, and what it does for our school building or our school buildings, um, in terms of both, you know. Um, you know, objective progress for students as well as, you know, financially, what the impact uh, is for, uh, the, specifically with the open choice, um, items we were talking about before. Um, so I might, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I don't know what my question is regarding it, but it, 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 it keeps, I, a lot of you guys are making, everybody's making good points. And the one thing I keep going back to is, I wish there was a way for us to measure. What are we getting out of this program for these students that this program is intending to impact these students for? Um, and so I'm not sure if that exists, Dr. Willett, I worked, having, you know, worked in the school buildings the last few years. Uh, I mean, I, there, again, there's no concrete answer for what works for these guys, might not work for these guys, and what's benefiting these guys might not benefit those guys over there. So, I'm not sure if you can really answer that, uh, if there is some sort of objective tool, um, that even eh, educators or administrators use to, to, to take by, eh, eh, to quantify what, you know, what we're getting out of some of our programs within the school buildings. But again, it just kept coming up and it, it, it just made me think, so you don't have to answer that right now, but it's in my brain, it's there.
You know, each all kinds of programs have, uh, returns on, returns on investment, ROI, right?
Yeah.
But it may be different for each program.
Right.
And so the ROI for a LEAP program or for a T T A program might be costing, so many are not going out, which happens. But the ROI for something like pathways is, you know, I, I do think if we were able to actually make it a funded program by the board. Um, that's a commitment to it versus us never being sure of it ever will be, per se. Then I do think that for the programs that we have, for instance, business. We have far fewer kids who would consider going to a magnet or charter for business because of the robustness of the business program. So your DECA has been built out three or four times, um, because of, you know, expanded. Uh, and I think a student looking at that and then looking at some business school that's a magnet, we go, wow, I have this. Engineering very soon, like, why I have this, but we don't have six or seven, you know, like we have the other ones. But we don't have six or seven, you know, like we have, the other ones, we're not able to compete with, so off they go. So pathways is a, is a avoidance program, cost avoidance, but, you know, and I've seen certain things posted out there that, you know, it was promised years ago and it never took off. We never funded.
Right.
For the things we have funded it for, it's quite successful in those areas. Um, but it's not going to be in areas we've never funded it. Um, and things like open choice, that's got a lot of ROI opportunity to it. But way back when we initiated it, the concept was kids come in at the K level and that we have kids come in only at the K level. You know, and so if we're gonna accept kids K five level open to all seats, that's a different story. Case K eight, different story, K twelve, different story, different structures needed, many more will come. You could have twenty kids next year additional if we opened it all the way to K twelve, but that was never the structure that was originally approved. So, you know, things like COVID, two COVID years and two years with a crumbling foundation where the kids were in portables, limited the number of people, they didn't want to send kids thirty minutes to go to a portable, right? So anyway, there's lots of ROI opportunities, they'll be different per program. So it'll be defined differently when we apply it to different things.
Sure.
But it exists for almost everything. You know, and it's, it's, you know, also opportunity costs, things like that.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a visual learner, so that sort of, that sort of put painting the picture sort of helps, again, understand, you know, you know, what Tony might be talking about, what Bill might be talking about, what Jen might be talking about and sort of categorizing, you know? Uh, I, I think that makes sense. So again, I'll wait, uh, I've got some opinions on, again, some of the things I've been mentioning tonight. I'll wait until some of my questions have been asked. Uh, I know it's time for my quarter three, so thank you for losing my voice. Thank you.
I just have a couple of, um, comments and, uh, one is, I, I thought Jen brought up an interesting point about the programs that we've lost at the high school. I personally am not, um, a proponent for the pre-K. I just have a different viewpoint on that and it's allowing kids to be kids, not pushing them too early. They get a lot, and I'm not really sure, anyway. So if, in fact, we were going to add anything, I personally would be much more open to say, okay, let's restore some of that stuff that's been cut from high school. That, that would be my go to. Uh, Katie mentioned going forward with something that's realistic maybe, I don't know if that's the word, you didn't find and said the same thing. I think, uh, you know, Phil also, I, I do feel like we as a board are going to have to pick a lane of what Dr. Willett has, you know, articulated in terms of is it gonna be teacher programs, what is the combination? But an eleven point one percent in my mind is not, is, is not something that I don't feel we can go forward with. So I, I think there's our choices ahead. I don't know if we as a board can come together and say, you know, these are the priorities so that then he's not creating three recipes or four recipes. But if, you know, uh, maybe, maybe that is what we need so that we can see some different recipes. Um, I think he mentioned five point oh five percent or, you know, typically we could do it for three or four percent, to be honest, I feel like we're it, with revale and everything else, I, I'm just, I'm not confident in all that anything in the five or whatever, four even, but again, I'm just suggesting that if we, you know, as a board come together, kind of prioritize, what does that recipe look like is in terms of what does level services or whatever that, and that doesn't have to be the term, but you know, what are our priorities in terms of, we want to keep staff, we want to keep programs, whatever. Um, so, uh, that, that's kind of my take on it after having heard everybody, but I just, I think we, we gotta make some decisions.
What's your thoughts? Yeah, can I, um, I, I think this was discussed earlier, I don't know if this was part of Bill's conversation. This, I'm, I'm still on page eight or I'm, or a reference back to page eight. Special education tuition where we're at, every one, one million eight ninety-six this year, we're jumping all the way up to one point five plus million, five twenty-seven plus thousand. Can we have a little background or guidance on how we're jumping up that substantially and that line item? Over half a million dollars.
I'm looking for, I'm just kind of catching up with you on the page. You mean special ed tuition for five twenty-seven thousand?
Yes.
It's based on when we, when we, uh, look at the programs and we look at the children in the programs, we try to calculate what that's going to mean, um, next year. It's, it's connected to the, the anticipated program needs of the kids. And so, you know, that, that's always a projection based on what we know right now about what we think is going to be happening next year for the children that they're serving or anticipate serving.
And the special education division, or?
Yes, yeah, and that's connected to, you know, specifics. And sometimes it turns out better. Like, somebody may move out of a district, but sometimes it ends up worse. Maybe those two people move into the district that have certain needs or a nexus, D C F places Talon as a nexus for something or, you know, associated things that would have to be done to, to comedy. So, um, you know, and there's certain things that the state will pay for or not pay for, and the excess cost can change. So it's based on, you know, our best shot at what things are going to be, what we're gonna get for reimbursement level. You know, so they do sometimes tricky things where, um, you know, they, uh, they increase the reimbursement, but then they increase your threshold. So they'll say, oh yeah, we're giving everybody this greater percent back, but you don't get to apply until you reach this higher threshold.
Yeah, I understand that.
So it changes and we do our best to project to that. Um, and that's the best projection from our people services people as to what that looks like for next year.
Okay, so, so just so can I just clarify? Um, so the one point five, is that for the, that's for the total cost for the special education tuition? Not including any offset reimbursement? Or is it much higher amount? And this is what you project from a reimbursement, say what we're gonna get, it's three million, we're gonna get reimbursed one point five, this is our outlay one point five?
Yeah, it's, it's, we will end up spending when we get the reimbursements back or whatever we're gonna get.
All right, so, all right, so the, the number's much higher.
Part of our total budget, you know, everything included in and out.
So the number's much higher, but we'll get in a projection of what you think we might get back.
Yeah, and there is actually a sheet, you know, if I strike names, it can, it, it shows like, you know, where the amount we're spending, the amount we get back, you know.
Is that in the budget or?
It's, it's got names on it, so no, it's not, it's kids, it's, it's students that are in a condition of tuition. So it's not something published, but it's used to generate.
Is it possible to get that sheet without the students' names on it?
Um, as long as there's nothing identifiable in it, it's probably something better to do in F F C if we can, just when we run over special ed costs, we can go over those pieces of it. I'd be more comfortable with, you know, having that there.
All right. So we can't get that before the budget decision, all right?
What? Go leave an F F C before that?
No, they just had one.
Well, I mean, and it, it, it equates to these kinds of factors, but it's our access cost considerations sheets.
Okay. Um, the other thing I know, reference back what Jen was saying regards to the pathways, I'm not close to the pathways, but the cost of the ten thousand dollars was just more or less for the faculty stipend portion of it. That's we're having students go to Rensselaer field on our bike tour. All of these other things, we drive up the price substantially higher. Transportation is whatever, mine, I.
Usually what I try to do is provide certain things, wherever I can get and utilize any grant or donated funds, I will. Sometimes some of those field trips are subsidized by, like, parents will pay a certain amount, unless you're somebody who's reintroduced lunch or challenged financially or in an analyst situation, then we have other ways of helping them. So it's, it's not a massive, they're not a massive burden on our budget for a variety of reasons. Um, and that's not really everything that's done, like Rensselaer field is a field trip done for a program. But there are speakers, we have people coming in doing Ted talk, you know, Ted light talks and there's all kinds of facets to that program that do not require any aspect of a field.
No, no, I, I'm not talking, I'm just more or less adding that when we're, when I'm being presented saying it's only ten thousand, that's not the true number. It's more or less what I'm getting my mind.
Well, it is.
Cause there's other, no, you just said it is. You hope to get funds from X, Y, or Z or A, B, C that offset the cost for transportation or materials or whatever. But the stipend part for the actual faculty is ten grand and then we have whatever other possible costs. I'm not saying everything that they're doing is a cost. People coming in obviously isn't a cost, but if they're gonna be doing something extra beyond just being inside the building, then there is an additional.
But what you're applying to that, you could apply to everything else, for instance, the Washington trip. You know, that's an additional cost. We offset some if we have kids who are, you know, financially challenged, but these field trips are not a required part of the pathways program. They're an additional thing that's available should people want to avail themselves of it. So it's not a major burden on our budget. The major burden with respect to pathways would be the, would be the stipends paid to the staff. And I think I said they were three, there was ten thousand, seven thousand, three thousand, so it's more like twenty thousand.
All right, twenty thousand.
But those people that do the stipends greatly expand the program because their responsibility is to aspects of the program that would otherwise not exist. So they, their, the purpose of that compensation is to work to expand the program.
No, I said, I said that the offset, it wasn't about the program itself, I'm just, I'm, I'm just talking about monetary issue, I'm not sure what the program is. I'm saying to run this additional program, I, I'm gonna stop talking about it, cause I'm getting bothered by it. Did run this additional program, there's other costs besides this, besides this thing, so.
Well, the other thing to keep in mind is.
That is a fact, you know? Yes.
Well, yeah, but you offset those costs if a kid doesn't go to a magnet or a charter. To, there's, you're right, that there's ins and outs, but that's where you look at an ROI, like, will that keep some kids from going to, you know?
I, I, I understand that, oh, I'm just talking from a dollar standpoint. The cost is an extra ten dollars, we gotta get tax money to pay for the ten dollars. Transportation, I go back to transportation. The regular bus routes. So I know last year we cut to, it seemed we had two or three and a couple blips here or there in the first probably month or six weeks of the transportation emails coming in. I haven't seen email come in since probably October regarding that. So my question or thought is, since we have two hundred and ninety-three thousand um, difference in this line item here, is it possible, even if it's a one bus or two bus subtraction from what we're running now to roll the dice, so it would be last year, is a possibility in my mindset for some savings, even if it's a one route, whatever it was, sixty or seventy-five thousand per route. Um, I think we should put that on the table. Um, I, I'll, that, that's fine for today. Thank you.
You want me to motion, you need to motion to go past ten five second.
Do a, uh, discussion? All right. Jaden, bye. Rainey.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Phil.
Hi.
And Jen? Katie?
Hi.
Dana? Dana? All right. Anyway, with the motion passes. Thank you. We. No, I'm, I'm done for this evening, thank you. Appreciate the time.
You had two, two things, hopefully quick things. You had mentioned, um, you know, grants when, when talking with Brian, but I look in the grants line item and our grant projections are down by eighty-five thousand dollars for, for fiscal year twenty-five and then down by another sixty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, why are, why are our projections going down instead of going up?
Well, you're looking at state and federal.
Okay.
And I would probably be doing more of the small stuff. Like a field trip is a, is not a state federal per se, but probably like a T D.
Okay.
P T O thing or one of the other possibilities now. So and I've run, I've done a couple of things like that, but there's, we aren't able to contribute to through stuff like that. So that's the big stuff. You look at federal and state, and I'm not sure about that ninety-five figure that you had asked about. I was looking at that and I'm talking to you on about it because I'm not sure about that one. See, if you go back to the budget in the prior year, it lists that same item as more like fifty or forty-six or fifty, so I gotta look at that.
Okay.
Uh, but in any case, the federal state grants are what you're referring to.
Right.
It's not, that's not the type of thing unless we're talking about the S S G that I would use for a smaller thing.
Sure, so why would our state and federal grants go down, um?
Just the availability of funding is let they lower it.
Okay.
They lower, usually most of those, it's because they lower it or sometimes they increase it, but usually it's fluctuating because they, they lower it or change it.
All right.
Now, open choice can be linked to the number of people we have, but even then that figure.
But you said open choice?
Open choice would be linked to the number of people. And, and the S S G, there's like, there's a core one with people, then there's, what's the A S S G that I applied for? And then there's two smaller ones, um, that I apply for. And usually the two smaller ones and A S S G fluctuate a little bit based on what they want to give us. And then the other one is based on the number of heads.
Okay, um, I wanna jump onto Jaden talking about S R O's, obviously important to all of us. Um, and, you know, uh, uh, you gave us a rough estimation, I'm hoping to have some at the start of next year, um, which, which is great. We've got seventy-five thousand dollars in the budget this year, is there anything that we can do between now and the end of the school year, even hiring a trooper? With seventy-five thousand dollars between now and the end of school year? Provide money for a trooper?
It requires a contract with the troop through the town and then, and the troopers. And they would have to invest in like a full-time, which we take, we already kind of offered a portion of that, they'd have to take another portion and I don't think.
Yeah. Yeah, is there anything that we could do?
Well, we are paying for the presence, you know, like there was a trooper at a dance the other night, we paid the troopers for their presence at that. So that still comes out of the money we have set aside for things like that.
Right.
Um, and we have increased and worked closely with the troop, the troop scene, in addition to resident with troop scene. That, you know, always, Brian Foley is always very cooperative, so are the troop, and getting more patrols, things like that. Um, the state troops, great, ours, great, I think the town relationship, you know, the school relationship are great. Um, we're getting maximally, I think, what we can get without a, without.
Sure.
You know, and the other thing that I mentioned, like, you know, we don't want to do the municipal office reason that for some reason gets scuttled. You can go in for one full S R O instead, I'm sorry, one full trooper instead. And so that's, that's, that's a potential future too, that doesn't require a certification for ten grand or any of that stuff.
I guess the biggest thing between now and the end of the year would be contractual. That we, is there, there's, doesn't sound like there's anything that we could do that wouldn't be contractual.
Unless you hire independent security people.
A private company?
That, or I have like our SWAT officers, a, the person we use for truancy, school avoidance, McKenney Vento, that type of thing, I could hire another individual like that. That, you know, then that would be an unarmed officer who works with our social workers, you know, for security and also for home visits and things like that. That would, that would be something, but then, you know, you you want to carry that into next year instead?
No, I'm just thinking about this.
Right, so whoever we hired for this year, we'd have to end their.
It'd be a temporary employee, sure.
So then, you know, then we, 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 the, so the officer we use for this, you know, tennis school avoidance and all that, we would want to just hire another one and get rid of them.
So, so maybe, are we gonna add? And if we need to, we can add, uh, security for this year to the gen item for next week.
Okay. That was it?
Okay.
That was it, well, and done. Jayden?
Um, yeah, I'm not gonna go around with more questions, I guess, you know, something I did just want to highlight. Um, was that you know, trying to think of the easiest way to say this without it being. So I sat in the town council meeting the other night and they, and I'm not gonna get it perfectly right, so don't destroy me online, um, but I think they said that they had something like an additional one point eight million dollars in excess. And I remember there was, I think it was two times during the budget season that they talked about more. And I remember there was, I think it was two times during budget season that they talked about more coming in. So I guess I just, you know, I always say something like this, but. I don't, I think it's important that we, which I think we all do now, but the public understand, which is complicated. But any increase that we necessarily make does not, no, does not immediately correlate to attack the crease. I think that as we grow our town, you know, there's a a lot of discussion over the years about the burden that is put on. Property owners and property tax. And as we grow our town and we bring these things in. We hopefully can grow all of our departments, which are so important, every single one of them. We do, you know, I'm going to advocate for our department, I believe it is my role. Um, it's not to say that I don't believe the other departments deserve to grow with town growth as well, they do. Um, but we are the largest department in this town, we serve the most customers. We have the most staff. Um, I'd say that probably nearly every resident in this town, and I guess I could be wrong, but has access. This service at some point, whether them them going to school, or the kids going to school here, or the grandkids going to school here, or. Somebody working in this district and their family. And, you know, the things that we're adding to this town, the Starbucks, the gymnastics. Facility. I I think that families are going to be spending a lot of time at these places, especially the gymnastics, I think they're the customers there. Uh, you know, again, everybody, I hopefully this town utilizes all our local businesses, but when I go into the spa and Camille's. Especially after, you know, sports games, full of families, full of. Um. It is not wrong for us to want to grow our district and serve. Our students and our families. That contribute a heck of a lot to this community, and so. I just think it's important that as we, I think we all know that we're not going to leave this room with a ten or eleven percent budget. But as we talk about this, I just hope that we all want to find ways to grow this department. And want to find ways to. Help make every aspect of this district better. In some way, shape or form. Um, I think we have a lot of opportunities to serve a lot of student needs in this budget. And I just really hope that when we get to the end of this, we don't find that we're back to a place where we're taking more away than we're adding. Because we're afraid to ask the town council for what we believe the students. Of our town deserve.
Okay. Dana?
Um, no, I just appreciate the conversation around the horn, um, I think I. Made a point about the things that I thought were important that the educators um and the administrators communicated. Um, I'm just hoping that uh we take the opportunity as a board to um, listen to what. Our resident experts are communicating to us and um, do our best to support our stu- students and staff. And town, but I I appreciate the conversation and the questions, and I'll continue to put my stuff into the um. Q and A.
Thank you, so just, you know, in closing on on this section, you know, the, I'm extremely pleased. With the conversations that, but I know a lot of the data we got, you know, very recently, and so you still trying to absorb that. Um, but you know, as as we sit through it, and I think, Rainey, you you mentioned, you brought up the point that. You know, as we sit, we walk in with a, you know, an eleven point eight uh percent. And that we're going to have to start making some decisions, we're gonna have to start having, you know, really talking through those, uh, through those priorities. And, you know, I say absolutely, I say exactly, uh. Each and every one of been taking notes as we've talked through the items and we've asked those questions are really funneling down to exactly. What what the point of these next few weeks is, you know, in these books, we have everything. These are all the things we've talked about, these are, these are most of the things we've talked about, these are the places where we could put. Energy, where we could put money, now, let's start talking about our priorities, and let's start braving down. Uh, to to where we think we're ready to go for for this next step. Jenny made a comment uh about, and I, without looking at my notes, that some of these items, maybe they weren't for this year. But by putting them in this initial budget, we're codifying it. We're asking the question, we're starting the discussions, we're making sure that those items aren't just forgotten, if we don't go them this year. Then they're thought about for next year, if at least a little bit of that work happened, we're we're continuing that movement, uh. I also like, and we've we've talked throughout this entire year about just the breadth of experience that we bring to this table. You know, we we don't want that one perspective, and everybody nods to the same direction here, and. Jaden, when you were talking about the return on investment, I leaned over and like, Chen, who is the uh? Who's the DECA teacher again, because she she needs to be congratulated because you're sitting here thinking about it from a business perspective. How we, eh, you know, how this input, how this investment, how that pays off, not just fiscal, but in each of those kids. How do we use that to make some of these comparisons? Exactly, you know, I'm thinking about from a process perspective and saying, okay, we're gonna whittle these. This request and these numbers to this point, the town council is gonna look at it from this point, our process is going to do these things such that. On the first Tuesday in May, the town needs to make their decisions, and I sincerely hope that that's the time when they make that, too, I don't want another last year. Um, but I also wanna make sure that these next few weeks, this next month, in addition to coming up with a budget. We've really fleshed out that plan, you know, as we're talking about for the calendar, Dr. Willet, you're talking about, hey, we're gonna do all this work. Why not make it a two-year calendar, cause that's only a little bit more work, but if we're gonna do all this work to talk through these priorities here. Why not make it so that that conversation lasts into next year too, uh, and I think we're doing. Uh, to the point everybody's made. We've gotta put something here that the average town person out there can help us, can join to. The result, and that's where it comes from, and and we're gonna get there, we also have to put something in place to make sure. That the kids that are going to that school have their needs met, have their interests met. You know, and I keep looking at here, my mind goes to from the instructional rounds and the uh, the art students, you know, and that that. That kid who just meeting that that young adult, let me fix that, just meeting, it has changed my perspective on things. And the complete current his life did, uh, because he found those art classes.
Yeah.
And so, you know, even if that's the only young adult that's, that that worked for, and it was worth the investment that we got one. Uh, I'll I'll stop there, and then we still got a couple other things to do, but just, uh, I wanna give my my kudos. Uh, to what I thought was a really great beginning.
So, um, kind of uh, made a procedural um, time uh, mindset, just so I have. So what 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 is our steps moving out of this meeting instead of just coming back and talking about the same? But not same, but different, uh, say, but I'm looking at page eight again, and I'm still questioning or talking about X, Y, or Z. Where are we going, you're you're looking for direction, we wanna set some direction. Uh, tonight, so we, cause I I feel, I I just feel a little bit of pressure, I'm looking at the calendar here, where is the twenty-second? We gotta be done by the the thirteenth of February, I mean, we're only talking, they're barely three weeks time here.
And and I think we have, and I think we will, uh, the way I've kind of been looking at it is based upon. The questions that have been posted, um, stop with Dr. Willet before this, as far as looking at the number of questions that have been submitted. The amount that he's got answers for versus the amount that he's working on answers to, uh, anticipating when the rest are answered and put in place. Add to that, the things that we've been talking about today, where we've started to talk about. I wanna say priorities, uh, but the thing, each and every, each and every person here said, you know, I'm not against this, but then I'm really looking at this, I'm really talking about this. Uh, the SROs, something everybody's talking about, reading and some of the instructional things, you know, the uh. Intervention or multi-year, thank you.
I knew you were looking for.
Yeah, uh, my notes are on a different page, uh, but but I think we've done, by putting that into place, we've got enough that we could start to. Narrow there, not necessarily the scenarios like we did last year, but we can guide that conversation for the next time. Uh, my goal, and this is just me talking, is that at the end of the next one. That we've got it to the point where we've got, we can say just a couple, we just gonna have to go. Uh, that next time's conversation is a little more structured, because we've already talked about really the high level. Did that answer?
Yeah, yes, I did, I I do have a question, Ben, from earlier, I I'm sorry, I know you're trying to wrap it up, but I just have. One thing on this year for the textbooks, would you like me to submit that question into the? Q and A budget, cause I'm thinking my thought process, why I might wanna do that or even asking about it. Is because there's a hundred and eight thousand here, is it possible that we can use that for something, s- say the. A portion for the computers, let me, so I'm just trying to, please, just roll that, please, mindset.
But it it's from my perspective, again, I'm all about collecting these questions, collecting this data, not just for now. Uh, great conversations here, the minutes, as always, are gonna be spectacular, but all of the questions that we can put in this document, this document. Uh, stays on the, on the uh, the website, so next year, we've got all the questions here, that we've got all the questions, we can see what was important.
Alright, thanks, I'm done, third time. Sorry, everybody.
Dr. Willet. Obsolete surplus equipment.
So, uh, you know, by more policy and by towns, uh, reg, we will take anything that has any potential value. And instead of throwing it in the dumpster, we'll follow the process of obsolete surplus equipment. In this case, um, we have received samples of textbooks. And these samples, you know, as you go through and review these things for potential purchase or utilization. Over time, you will collect a whole bunch of these things. And so we are wanting to dispose of these, but if we throw them all in the dumpster, someone might walk by the dumpster and say. The district throughout textbooks that look great. So we are officially following the obsolete surplus equipment process, and we will hand these over to the town, and the town can decide what they wish to do with. A variety of pilot textbooks, maybe the library will took them away, or somebody will do something with them, but. Rather than us disposing them in that manner, you know, we're just officially saying, these are pilots, we didn't buy these, these are not something that, you know, are new that we're hucking. You know, here's the process to follow, maybe the town wants to do something with them.
Right, let's go, conversation, any?
So, Dr. Willet, what is this, uh, entertain the motion as written? Motion to declare the sample textbooks as obsolete and turn it over to the town in accordance with the Board of Education Policy thirty forty.
Second, discussion. Okay, Jen.
Hi.
Rainey.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Bye, Jen.
Hi.
Katie.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Go ahead and pass those over. There, so public participation, comments must be limited to items on this agenda. For people in the room, please feel free to raise your hand, if you are online, feel free to raise your virtual hand, always put, start with your name. And your address for the minutes. Going twice. All right, moving on.
Points of information, would anybody from the board like to speak, just really quickly, and then, to be clear, I stand by every word I say in this room, but. Um, you know, I wanna, and it's just, you know, the second round of things, I wanna make sure there's an order, and we follow an order and whatever. What I really wanna address is, I I I wanna check myself before I wreck myself a few minutes ago, the last few months in in Dr. Willet. Specifically with the, with the schedule release and and all these things, you've had a hell of a few months, and so I don't want you to think, I mean, these few, you know, this year, we should have done it this way, we should. I'm more so saying, you know, as we move into the next few years, specifically with the calendar, um, you know, possibly moving this process up a bit. That way, we've got a a a a a calendar for the next school year, or every two years, we've got the calendar for the next school year. But then come January, we've got an idea as to what a two-year plan would look like, because now, um, um. What whatever con has 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 submitted, you know, their 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 two-year idea, and so. Um, I I I apologize for how I came off earlier, and if I came off in any sort of way, um, stand by my words, but. Um, there's a right way to go about, and so, um, in that case, I apologize, but moving forward in the in the sense of the the calendar. I would be interested to investigate what that process would look like if we, number one, pushed it up a little bit, number two, included that second year. You know, in our discussions, we were in the board's discussions, whichever, whatever that word might look like, um, you know, years down the road, so that's all, thank you.
Everybody, thank you. Anybody else?
Dr. Willet, comment on future?
Just note that the upcoming instructional rounds. Um, we had to move one of the safety and security, blacked down five real pieces, so. Birch Grove is now March third, no one has signed up for this yet, so, no one had signed up for either of these yet, so. March third is the Birch Grove gate. Um, nearly the school we have to move, and the district one stays the same. So the next one coming up is March third, and it's the um, inter-reading literacy programming at Birch Grove. That is, no one signed up yet, but I'm plugging that. Um, the, I have to update the signup sheet with these dates, so if you're gonna sign up for the Birch Grove, one just realize it's March third. But I haven't gotten to the form. Same thing, uh, mer- middle school will announce the new date by our next week.
I'm sorry, I I didn't, that, did you say the date will be announced next week?
By the next week.
Yeah, I will get the TBD date for next meeting, we had to move these around a.
Got you, sorry, I couldn't hear that, thank you.
I will entertain a motion to dismiss, so moved, second, discussion. All right, Jaden, uh, I, Rainey.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Phil.
Hi.
Uh, Jen, Katie.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Everybody have a wonderful night.